Knock, knock, knock. Good evening, everyone. The time is seven o'clock, so I'd like to call the meeting to order for the City of Elgin, September 12th, 2022 session of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Look to staff to please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Valdez?
Here.
Commissioner Wildermove?
Here.
And Chairman Cox?
Present.
We do have forms.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from the August 1st, 2022 session. Is there any discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion for that approval.
I move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wildermove?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The minutes are approved, four to zero.
All right, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the Chairman's opening statement. So it's my opportunity to welcome each of you here tonight with us. Those of you who may be watching remotely, always like to welcome my fellow commissioners, city staff, the people working in the back to make this sound and lights and everything else work, and of course, our court reporter down here in the front. We are coming up on the end of the third quarter of 2022, and it's amazing how the time this year seems to be flying by. So we're thankful for that. We have five items on the agenda tonight: preliminary and final plat, a conditional use, two conditional uses, and then two annexation preliminary and final plat, plan subdivisions, and this map amendment. So that kind of is a mouthful. We'll hear more about each of these petitions coming up. We always look to city staff to kind of walk us through each of these petitions. Just for those of you who may be here tonight and kind of going through the procedures, then we as a commission will look to staff, ask questions. Following that, we invite the petitioner teams to come on up to the lectern over here, tell us your thoughts, add anything that you'd like us to consider. And then we as a commission take the opportunity to ask questions of the petitioner team. Following that, we open each of these petitions up to the public hearing portion. So that's the opportunity for those of you tonight who may be concerned residents, have questions or comments, it's your opportunity to come on up and tell us your thoughts. There are some distances and other things, whether you can ask questions of the petitioners, we can always get into that if there's any questions on that. But following that, if there's anything that needs answers from the petitioner, we would typically call them back up and give them an opportunity to answer those questions. Following that, we close the public hearing portion of each of these petitions. We look to city staff for any final or closing comments if they have them, and then we take a moment to deliberate and vote on these petitions. This commission is a recommending body to city council, so we pass our recommendations on to city council. And staff will always work with the petitioners to take steps following that. But there's usually two meetings at the city council level if the petitions move forward, if the petitioner decides to move those cases forward. But again, as I said, tonight is the public hearing portion for each of these petitions, so if you've got a thought, if you're hesitating to come on up, this is your opportunity, so please come on up and tell us your thoughts. So at this point in time, we'll move forward with the agenda. Those of you who wish to speak tonight, now is your opportunity to stand, face the court reporter who is right down here in the front, and take the oath, even if you think you might want to talk. You know, it doesn't hurt to take the oath now and whether you use it later or not. Anyone in this section?
Is anyone wants to speak to the House?
Yes, definitely, yep.
Does anyone want to go ahead and say something? Do you want to swear? This has to be a box. You don't want people to know. That's a good question. That's a good question.
And if you decided, you know, not to stand now and you change your mind later, we can always swear you in as needed. All right, I can move on to item F. I see DeMire is lining up for that, which is for 2285 to 2295 for Valley Creek Drive.
Thank you, Chairman Cox, and good evening to everybody. And for the record, we do have proof of proper notice for the first petition before you tonight.
Thank you.
Which is the application by Burnage Corporation as applicant and J.R.A. Holdings LLC as a property owner, who requesting approval of the preliminary and final plat of subdivision to subdivide approximately 4.35 acre property located in southwest corner of Royal Boulevard and Valley Creek Drive. So as usual, we'll start with the aerial map of the subject property. In this case, this is the bird's eye view looking north. Subject property outlined in red, southwest corner of Royal and Valley Creek Drive. As you can see, the property is improved with a building, it's a two-story office building that's located in the northern section of the property. The property also includes 94 parking spaces. It is Zone AB, area business district. As you can see, the properties to the north have the same color shade, so they're also zoned, in this case, PAD, planned area business district. That property is improved Russo Power Equipment Store. And then just to the east of there are several office buildings with multiple tenants. To the west is the CF Zone property, which is improved with the City of Elgin Fire Station 3, and beyond that is the Home Depot property along Rainbow Road. To the east is the, again, CF Zone property, this case, this is the Rosewood one-story senior living facility. And then to the south are two family residences along Alice Place. So the applicant is proposing to subdivide the existing property into two lots for the purpose of finalizing the purchase agreement for the property. The existing building and the existing parking lot would be located in Lot 1, that would be 1.7 acres in size. And then Lot 2 would be the vacant space south of the building, that would be approximately 2.5 acres. The owner of the property is looking to sell the building and the parking lot to a potential buyer, and then the existing owner would then retain the ownership of the vacant land, that would be the Lot 2. Here is the proposed plat of subdivision, indicating the two lots, both lots meet the minimum lot size and other requirements of subdivision ordinance. There is no proposed development of Lot 2. Any future development would have to comply with all requirements of the municipal code, including zoning and stormwater ordinances. Staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. And with that, happy to answer any questions. The attorney representing both the owner and the clerk, sir, about Heinberg is here to address the commission.
All right, well, we'll invite Mr. Heinberg up in a minute, but we'll start with questions for you. Commissioner Wildermove, do you have questions for staff?
No questions.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
Commissioner Jones?
Nope, no questions, thank you.
Commissioner Abwali?
No questions, thank you.
All right, I don't have any questions for you. Come on up, sir. And just a general comment for everyone tonight, if you can state your name, spell it for the court reporter, and give us your address, it helps to make things neat and orderly.
My name's Richard Heinberg, she has my card, I'm with the Hutbomo office, 2425 Royal Boulevard in Elgin, which happens to be in the building in Lot 1. I have read the staff's report and listened to what Mr. Luttevich said tonight, and I don't have anything to add to it, or just glad to be here to answer any questions. One thing I might say is that the property had been sold already, the buyer could not wait for the subdivision process to be finished at time constraints, so basically upon final approval, Lot 2 will be conveyed back from Burnage Corporation, which was the original developer in 1987. Basically, I'll have to be glad to answer any questions.
No, we appreciate the additional info you just brought to us. We'll start on my left. Commissioner Abwali, any questions for Mr. Heinberg?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Valdez?
None.
Commissioner Wildermove?
No questions.
All right, thank you, sir. I don't have any questions for you either. All right, as promised, now we'll open this up to public comment, so if there are those of you in the audience who came tonight to tell us your thoughts on this petition, now is your opportunity. Everyone's either looking at the screen or looking down, so I think we can safely close the public hearing portion of this petition. And in good order, we look back to staff for any closing comments.
We don't have anything further to add. Again, staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions in the packet.
All right, thank you. So then at this point in time, the Chair will entertain a motion for this petition, which is 35-22.
I move to recommend the city council approve petition number 35-22, right, 3522, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet, and to adopt as to the findings of the commission, those findings also provided within our packet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wildermove?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Abwali?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion is approved, five to zero.
All right, that'll be our recommendation to city council, and as promised, you can work with staff on the upcoming dates for that petition. Okay, well, we will move on to the first conditional use for tonight, which is 28 Tyler Creek Plaza, petition 25-22, to establish a commercial event space within an existing commercial tenant space.
Thank you, Chairman Cox, and again, we do have proof of proper notice on this one as well.
Thank you.
This is the application by Gilberto Conejo as applicant, and J. and J. Covina Center LLC as property owner, who requesting a conditional use to establish a commercial event space for activities pertaining to the assembly of people at the property commonly known as 28 Tyler Creek Plaza. So the subject property is a 3,600 square foot tenant space that is located, is part of the Tyler Creek Shopping Center, which is anchored by Butera Market, all of that located generally at the northeast corner of Big Timber Road and North McLean Boulevard. This shopping center is Zone AB, area business. As you can see, to the north is the Tyler Creek Plaza North Shopping Center, it's also Zone AB, as well as the Hunter Ridge Apartment Complex, that is Zone PRC, Planned Residence Conservation District, that also wraps around the property on the east. To the south across Big Timber Road are GI Zone properties that are improved with several light industrial buildings. To the west is the, there are two gas stations, one in the northwest, one in the northeast corner, and then there's a Chase Bank building immediately to the north, the west side of North McLean Boulevard. All those properties also Zone AB, area business district, which is a commercial zoning classification. This is the front elevation of the main multi-tenant building within the shopping center, that includes, as you can see on the right, the Butera Market. The subject tenant space is the northernmost tenant space within this building. This space is currently occupied by Universal Church, that is soon to be vacant. The shopping center also includes First Community Bank, and several restaurants, among other things, including Dunkin' and Rosario's Pizza. So the applicant is proposing to establish a commercial event space that would be available for rent for private parties. G&amp;A Super Fiesta, as the place would be called, would have a maximum capacity of 145 persons. It would be available, as I mentioned, for various types of events, including banquets, baby showers, bridal showers, various types of birthday parties, and other celebrations. Facility would be open and available for rent only on Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. It will be closed Monday to Thursdays. On Fridays, the hours of operation would be from 4:00 p.m. to 12:30 a.m. On Saturday and holidays, from 12:00 p.m. to 12:30 a.m. And then on Sundays, from 12:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. The facility would be, various types of events would be catered by off-premise caterers. The applicant also intends to apply for the liquor license to be able to serve alcohol beverages as part of these events. The proposed event space, based on the capacity and the number of employees during the busiest events, which could have up to eight employees on site, is required to have 42 parking spaces. The entire shopping center, with the current mix of tenants, is required to have 427 parking spaces. There are a total of 433 parking spaces on site, so the shopping center is going to continue to meet the parking requirement. As you recall, this particular petition was before you the two previous months, and was continued at request of the applicant. There are private covenants that affect the shopping center, and the, there was some concern, amongst other property owners within the shopping center, that the proposed use would violate some of those private covenants. Since then, the property owner and the tenant, or I should say, the applicants, as well as other shopping center owners, have come to an agreement and have resolved those concerns and issues. So therefore, the application is due for you tonight. The application for conditional use has to satisfy standards for conditional use. We provided our overview of the standards in the packet, and staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. Of those conditions, I'll just note that the event space will not be allowed to be used for various types of music, or musical performances and concerts. If it is music, or concert, or I should say, live music is performed, it can only be done so as an accessory use for the private events. With that, staff recommends approval, again, subject to those conditions. Happy to answer any questions. We have the applicant and the owner representative in the audience also here to address the mission.
All right, thank you. I'll start with Commissioner Valdez, do you have questions for staff?
No questions for staff.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions.
Commissioner Wildermove?
Yeah, just one quick question. I just, I noticed one potential concern about noise from a resident in the area. I'm wondering about the 12:30 a.m. closing time and how that aligns with closing times of similar businesses. And 12:30 might, to me, seems like a little late, I don't know if I'm sure, but just curious as to how that aligns.
Sure, very good question. So we made sure that the applicant's proposal includes only the interior of the premises, so if they do have any events, it will have to be within the, on the inside of the premises, so they will not be able to have any outdoor activities, or outdoor seating, or anything like that associated with this. The 12:30 closing time is fairly common among these event spaces, especially for the weekends. The applicant can speak to this, but most of the time, in the private agreements that they have with the party that's renting the space, usually the activities have to wind down about an hour before the facility can shut down, and then that allows some time for the facility to shut down, to clean up, and all that stuff. So our expectation is certainly that if there's any music, or any activities, events, that it will be done well before it's operating.
Thanks for the clarification, appreciate it.
Commissioner Abwali?
No questions.
I just have one question for staff. One of the response forms talked about noise in the present tense. Is this currently being occupied for this use, or is it just the writing style of that particular respondent?
I would think it's the writing style, it's currently used by the church, so there should be no noise associated with the functions of the church.
Okay, that was my only question. All right, so we will take this opportunity now to welcome the petitioner team to come on up.
My name is Alexandra Jacobowski, I'm project manager and project architect for Pro Love Architects, and our office prepared plans for this unit, and we try to maintain as much of existing space as possible. There's one, there are not that many to be managed. There are not that many changes.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry. No, I'd love to, someday we'll figure out how to do this, but we've got to have you at the mic, so everything can be recorded, so I'm sorry for that.
The front part, it's almost not changed, that was on you know, the podium for the church, for the church. And basically, the renovation is minimal. Whatever was absolutely required, the two existing bathrooms were too small. One, it's, you know, bigger, so, and both of them, they are handicapped, but they, they met the requirements from previous ADA codes, but not the present. So one bathroom was, we used, you know, some space from the corridor, and included that in this bathroom, and this bathroom got enlarged, so this bathroom meets, you know, ADA requirements based on, you know, current codes. And we, we designed the space this way, that we created additional coat closets, lap chairs, and there is, you know, some small playing area for children, because most of these galleries, in our understanding, would be dedicated to family events, when parents would be bringing children. So that's some area dedicated, you know, for children to play, to color the books, whatever, you know, activities are appropriate, you know, for children that certain age. And we will also, we would like to remodel the kitchen, so this kitchen will be, you know, more functional than it's right now. And we eliminated, you know, one big office which was built years ago. So everything should meet all the requirements, you know, to this type of business. And regarding, you know, this noise complaint, I looked at the map, and the person who that concerns leaves, you know, behind the back of this unit, and the back of the unit is dedicated to office and to storage, so there is, you know, way less chances for any noise to, you know, go up the direction of this apartment building. And here is the Mr. Gilberto Conejo, he's the owner of G&amp;A Super Fiesta Corporation, and he will be operating the business. So if you have any questions regarding the business, you will be able to answer.
Okay, I mean, we can certainly move to questions, but I also wanted to give you the opportunity, if you'd like to tell us anything additional.
Thank you, everyone, for the time. My name is Gilberto Conejo, owner of G&amp;A Super Fiesta. Like Alexandra mentioned, it's mainly dedicated for family event, you know, like birthdays. I currently help one of my partners operate a similar business, and I may also answer any questions, you know, regards this type of businesses. And I also have some pictures with me, in case anybody's interested in kind of seeing how this will kind of be looking to operate. So it's going to be something similar to what we are currently applying for at 28 Tyler Creek Plaza. With that, I would like to answer any questions that anybody may have.
All right, well, we appreciate you coming with photos, we'll see if we need to look into those, but we'll start with Commissioner Wildermove, do you have questions for this petitioner team?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Abwali?
No questions.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, you mentioned, there's a kitchen on the premises that you hope to remodel, so is the goal then to be having food service there? I know right now it says you, it's not eligible.
All the sandwiches and salads will be prepared at the site, and all other food will be delivered, you know, from outside, and served on your own space.
Okay, and is that?
You know, everything will be paid for, probably, you know, sandwiches and salads.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Valdez?
I don't have questions.
All right, I don't have any questions for you, but I do kind of want to redirect to staff based on that comment, does that align with your understanding of this petition?
Yeah, that's no problem. If they choose to prepare some food on the premises, they'll just have to obtain a food establishment permit, stay aware.
Okay. All right, well, thanks for coming up this evening. We'll open this petition up now to public comment. So if there are any of you here with us this evening that would like to comment, now is your opportunity. Well, I'm seeing smiles this time, so that's a good thing. No one's coming on up, so we'll close the public hearing portion, and look back to staff.
Nothing further to add. Again, this is the application for conditional use. Staff believes that all applicable standards are satisfied, and staff recommends approval, subject to conditions.
All right, thank you. So at this point in time, the Chair will entertain a motion for this petition, which is 25-22.
I move to approve petition 25-22, subject to the terms and conditions outlined in our packet.
And to adopt the?
I second.
Thank you. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Abwali?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wildermove?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved, five to zero.
All right, thank you. Thanks for coming this evening. That'll be the recommendation to city council. That'll, that'll be the recommendation to City Council. All right, we are moving along at a great pace. Brings us to petition 39-22 for 818 South McLean Boulevard to establish a drinking place as part of an existing restaurant. And if it takes staff a moment to reset here, for those of you in the audience, tonight, the commission's package was 561 pages. So I thank my fellow commissioners for taking the time. It's about 161 megabytes all total that was transmitted through to us, so.
That's why I was late, just kidding.
Right, right, all right. I apologize for the delay there, hopefully, you ready to go?
No, no problem at all. Thank you Chairman Cox. In light of that, we, we understand there were some difficulties in staff distributing the packet or sending the email out with the links to the packet on Friday. So on behalf of staff, I really apologize for that, and I'll try to go into further details on these, on these applications and if you have any questions on this.
I would just say, since it's a one-off, appreciate the apology, but don't worry about it. It doesn't, it happened so infrequently in my tenure on this commission.
It doesn't happen again. So the next petition before you is the application by Josefina Rivera and Emily's Mexican Grill, number two, is applicant, and Spartan Elgin LLC is property owner. Who requesting a conditional use to permit a drinking place, service of alcoholic beverages, as part of the existing restaurant of the property, commonly known as 818 South McLean Boulevard. So again, we'll start with the aerial map of the subject property. In this case, this restaurant, Emily's Mexican Grill, is within a tenant space that's approximately 1,300 square feet. It is part of McLean Plaza Shopping Center that is located on the west side of South McLean, in between Collet Green Drive on the north and Torrey Pine Drive on the south. Forty-six thousand square foot shopping center is, is zoned, as you can see, N B or P and B, Planned Naval Business District. If, to the north and south are similarly zoned properties, there's, to the north, so P and B, and then to the south, N B, Naval Business. To the north is a multi-tenant commercial building that includes Fox Valley Shooting Range. And then to the south is the multi-tenant building that includes the Armanetti's Liquor Store. Across the street, across South McLean Boulevard, is the property zone O R I, Office Research and Industrial. But that property is approved at mobile home dwellings. And then to the west in the back, the property above, single-family homes, so R C one, single-family residential. The shopping center is also home to Bungie's Auto Repair, and then a couple of office users. The tent, the restaurant tenant space is generally in the middle of the building, the front elevation facing South McLean Boulevard. So Emily's Mexican Grill is looking to expand the restaurants to include the adjacent tenant space that would increase the size of the restaurant from about 1,300 square feet to approximately 3,800 square feet. And as part of that expansion, the applicant is requesting approval to be able to serve Mexican beer and margaritas for the restaurant customers. All alcoholic beverages would be served for onsite, onsite consumption. The proposed expansion would essentially double the dining room space of the restaurant. This floor plan indicates the expanded restaurant. The sort of the, the western portion of the, of the slide is the existing restaurant. And then the, the right side is the proposed expansion. The applicant would make only interior changes to the space to connect the two units. They would provide about a 10-foot opening to, to connect the two dining rooms. There would be really no other changes to the exterior of the building or to the restaurant operations other than the service of alcoholic beverages. The restaurant is currently open from 11:00 to 10:00 Monday through Wednesday, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Thursday through Saturday, and from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Sundays. Now, if the zoning approval is granted for the conditional use, the applicant still needs to apply for and obtain a liquor license. Staff has provided our overview of the standards in the packets. We do believe that all applicable standards are satisfied. And with that, staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. The applicant's team is here, if you can address the commission as well.
All right, thank you. Look to Commissioner Valdez, questions for staff?
No, I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Wildemuth?
Does the liquor license pertain to, because they mentioned specifically Mexican beer and margaritas, does the liquor license then only pertain to those two? Or then if you get like, the liquor license, there's not like tiers of liquor license that were done?
Yes, exactly right. There, there are different tiers of liquor license. They will probably get the license that allows them to serve both beer and spirits or liquor. I think there are different levels of liquor license that allows a limited amount of spirits to, you know, for, you know, just margaritas.
Yep.
But they will ultimately choose that option.
Okay, thank you. That was actually going to be my question, so we're not accidentally limiting them at this, at this phase, but thank you for that. Commissioner Abalali?
No questions.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions.
I don't have any additional questions. All right, we'll welcome the petitioner team to come on up now.
Hi.
Welcome.
My name is Tlamah Bonia, and this is my mother-in-law, Josefina Rivera. I'll be speaking on her behalf just due to the language barrier. I just want to give like a brief background. So we're a family-owned business. We were established in September of 2013. We started off in Bartlett in a smaller location, mainly carryout. We only had three tables in the front window. So we're there about seven years, and we felt that we kind of outgrew the space. So after doing research and whatnot, we came across this location in Elgin on McLean Boulevard, which was pretty vacant. So our intention was to grow and expand our dining. We opened right in the middle of the beginning of the pandemic, so we held off on leasing the space next to us, just to see how everything would go. And thankfully, everything's been going good, been growing a lot of, our, our menu is small. We try to keep it simple, so our food is consistent every time the customer comes back. And we've been kind of growing by word of mouth. And it's been something, alcohol has been requested by our customers. They're eating tacos or burrito, they, you know, do you guys have beer and whatnot? So now I think we're ready to move forward and lease next door and expand and add this to our menu. Any questions?
We'll start with Commissioner Jones.
No questions, but thanks for choosing Elgin and moving here, and everything's better with a margarita. Good luck to you, Anja, thank you.
Except for this meeting. All right, we'll leave personal opinions at the mo-, all right, Commissioner Abalali?
No questions.
Commissioner Wildemuth?
No questions, and echo, thank you for choosing Elgin.
Commissioner Valdez?
Well, she took the margaritas, so, no, no questions.
Yeah, no, I mean, it sounds like a, a good thing that you're able to be here and expand and expand your offerings, so I don't have any questions for you either.
Yeah, well, we're hoping to make this like our sponsor poem here on Elgin.
Sounds great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If there are those of you in the audience who'd like to comment on this petition, come on up, please. You can, thank you. Going once, going twice. All right, we'll close the public hearing portion and point our gaze back to city staff.
Nothing further to add. Again, staff recommends approval, subject to conditions in the packet.
Excellent. So then, moving on, the chair will entertain a motion for this petition, which is 39-22.
I move to recommend that City Council approve petition 39-22, subject to conditions outlined within our packet and to adopt the findings of the commission. Those findings also provided in our packet.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Abalali?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wildemuth?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion is approved, five to zero.
Uh, where do we go? There, that'll be our, our recommendation to City Council. All right, see, we've got a, a different planner for the presentation of the next, next petition. A face we haven't seen in a while, but this is for petitions 14-22, 15-22, and 16-22 for a property on Hopps Road. Take it away.
Thank you, good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we do have proper, we have proof of proper notice.
Thank you.
Just wanted to load up that, and then I'll go ahead and start here. So tonight before you, we have petitions 14-22, 15-22, and 16-22, submitted by Avalon Trails LLC as applicant, is requesting annexation, preliminary engineering, final plan subdivision, and a plan development as a map amendment with departures from the Elgin Municipal Code to construct 130 townhome units on approximately 15 acres of farmland, located north of Hopps Road, approximately 1,200 feet west of Randall Road. The property is commonly referred to as 37 West 142 Hopps Road, and to be known as 2650 Hopps Road if annexed into the city. Let me turn here, let's try this again and see what's going to work. So the parcel currently includes two single-family residential homes that are served with well-inseptic systems, several small farm buildings that are scattered around the single-family homes, have a driveway access off of Hopps Road. The property is on Air Farming and, in unincorporated King County. North of the property, right here, north of the property, is the reserved townhomes that is developed and is zoned multi-family, plain multi-family residence, and is also zoned P C F, plain community facility residence. The reserve was annexed into the city in 2001 and consists of about 266 townhomes. To the east of the subject property is the Iglesia Apostólica Church, which was annexed into the city in 2019. Let's see this here. And is on C F, community facility. The property slopes about 16 feet from the south towards the northeast corner. Just make a note here that north is to your right, so. This way is up north, okay. So Avalon Trails will have one access point at Hopps Road and will also connect to the reserve by extending Reserve Drive. This internal street layout will finish a critical north-south connection from Bowes to Hopps Road. The subdivision would also provide two future east-west connections. The road to the east will begin an important east-west connection that will ultimately lead to Randall Road. The applicant has provided the traffic study that substantiate the proposed design and improvements, and the subdivision is consistent with ongoing efforts by King County Department of Transportation to realign the Randall and Hopps Road intersection. So just to point it out here on the sight plane, so here is Hopps Road. This is the one connection. To the north, we have the Reserve Townhouse subdivision. This is a road, Reserve Drive extended to a road stop to the west, and then it will continue down south to Hopps Road as a red drive. Also will provide another road stop here to the west. And this is the east-west connection that I was talking about that will connect it around to Randall Road to the east. The townhouses will be arranged within 23 buildings that are oriented along walkable, well-designed, well-landscape streets. Each building would contain about between three and seven units. The smaller lots up here, just to show, be about three units here, four, five, and then the majority here about seven, also the same along here. The buildings would be three stories high, except for, so. Next slide quickly, okay? So the buildings would about, would be about three stories high, except the end units that are two stories high. Each townhouse would have, would include an attached two-car rear-loaded garage accessible from private driveways in the back. And each townhouse would also have two exterior parking spaces on their driveway. This is the elevation of the rear, street front. And this is the elevation of the two-story unit. So Avalon Trail will be designed, like I said, with three distinct townhome units. This building design and orientation will continue the desirable residential land pattern that was established by the reserve, the reserve subdivision. The exterior elevation is very well-designed, highly articulated, and featuring a combination of masonry and fiber cement siding. Buildings are intentionally close to the street and include extensive landscaping to provide an inviting streetscape that is pedestrian-friendly. Move on to the floor planes. So the three-story units would be about 1,800 square feet and will include three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, formal dining room, laundry room on the second floor, and the option for a second family room, fourth bedroom, or a home office on the lower level. Just to give you an idea, this is the lower level. Three bedrooms, master room, and dining room area. The two-bedroom end units will be about 1,600 square feet and will consist of a minimum of the two bedrooms, two and a half bath rooms with the option for a second family room or additional bedroom on the lower level. Next, we have the proposed landscaping plan. The applicant has prepared a tree survey and a protection plan. The findings of the, of the tree survey states that the majority of the trees on the site are second-generation invasive species, such as choke cherry, silver maple, and box elder trees that are poor condition, poor quality, and do not need to be replaced. The applicant will be installing over 160 shade trees, 49 ornamental trees, and about 124 evergreens throughout the subdivision, focusing on the east and south property lines to provide buffering to the existing church located to the east and along Hopps Road. So the development needs several departures from the requirement of the zoning and subdivision ordinance, as was described more in detail within our staff package on page 13 and 14. Showing additional departures from the multi-family zone and district ordinance. And on to the next. So the standards for, map amendment standards for this petition, staff, is. Sorry, let me go to the next one, too. The plan development standards, this application have met all, we have found that the application have met all the standards for both map amendment and a plan development. And that will conclude my presentation before you tonight. Staff is recommending approval of petitions 14-22, 15-22, and 16-22, subject to the conditions that was outlined in our staff. And with that, I'll open up if you have any questions. We also do have the applicant, Mr. Jeff Pellock, in the audience tonight.
All right, I'll start with Commissioner Abalali, do you have questions for staff?
No questions for staff, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
Commissioner Wildemuth?
No questions for staff.
I was hoping one of them did, but I don't either, so.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
You're making it too easy.
All right. All right. So then, we will look to the petitioner to come on up. Again, state your name, spell it, give us your address, and then tell us your thoughts.
Good evening. Jeff Peloc, P-E-L-O-C-K, last name. Um, I'm with Northmark Homes. Northmark Homes is a family-owned business. It's been Elgin-based our entire career, and we are, we've built up and down Fox Valley over the last thirty-five years, so we've been around a while. Staff has done a tremendous job, again, presenting everything about the project, and there's really a whole lot to talk about other than who I am, and, um, you know, we are planning to use high-quality materials. We're planning to build a really nice-looking project, and we'd like to seek your approval for that. Uh, good questions, I'm glad to answer.
We appreciate the, those thoughts, your background. We'll start at my right. Commissioner Wildemuth, do you have questions for this gentleman?
Um, yeah, what's the, just curious what the price point is for the townhomes, and then like also how do you develop kind of your, I guess, market assessment for a number of townhomes being built in this specific location?
Well, we use third parties for market analysis to tell us kind of, you know, how many units they think we can absorb, and how many units are currently in the marketplace. And, uh, our, our, you know, efforts on that say that this is, you know, a good spot for us, so that's why we've chosen it and decided to make the, uh, the approach to it. The units will sell in the low three hundreds, start in the low three hundreds. I mean, construction costs have taken some very big hits in the last twelve to eighteen months, and the cost has really doubled. So it's, you know, it's, it's going in a natural force or seal process as well, so.
Commissioner Valdez?
He asked my question, so no questions.
Great. All right, well, I'll call you first in the next round. Commissioner Jones, questions for the petitioner?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Abwali?
Is there any near or far plans to develop the two properties that are next to it? Is there a thought process involved with that?
Um, well, that would, you know, those property owners would have to be.
That you guys have thought about it?
Ready to sell, and from what I understand right now, it may not be, so, but I mean, it would be out of question if we had the opportunity to certainly do it our way.
Thank you.
All right, I don't have any questions for you, so appreciate you coming on up tonight. We will now open this petition, or petitions up to public comment. I do have a sign-in sheet, a name that's potentially part of the development team, John Cernick. Are you here? Do you want to comment on anything?
I don't really have a comment.
All right. So that's the only name on the, the sign-in sheet. If there are a remainder of you who'd like to come on up, please.
Good evening. My name's Tim Carr, K-A-A-R. I'm the president of the Reserve of Elgin Association, just north of this Hops Road, and I had the opportunity to look at it quite a week ago, and my first comment, as soon as I looked at it, was, wow, this is very dense. Um, and I was told that it's equivalent to a reserve, and I just found that, sorry, I went back, I did some research. The Reserve of Elgin consists of three hundred and fourteen townhomes, not two hundred and sixty-six, we have three hundred and fourteen. The original plan survey indicates that we are on the southeast quarter of section twenty-nine. A quarter section is a hundred and sixty acres, so we have three hundred and fourteen townhomes that went into a subdivision of a hundred and sixty acres. Now, granted, the townhomes are close together, but we have immense amount of green space around us. Now, some of that green space was beaded over to the Forest Reserve, but we have the Forest Reserve along the current limits of our property. Some of it went to a great old library. But still, we have quite a bit of green space. So, um, if you just examine the two hundred and six townhomes that are in the southern portion of our subdivision, we have thirteen point seven acres of green space, where around just three hundred and six. I was able to ascertain that through the past records of King County. This proposed development has a hundred and thirty acres, so to have the equivalent amount of green space right around those buildings, they would need eight point six acres. What I see on the plan is a point six acre space with a gazebo on it, and then there is a detention pen out there, which is two point four acres. So they have approximately three acres set aside from the fifteen. My question is, where are the children going to play? Where are the dogs going to be walked? As I look at the plan, the previous plan, much of the development is under concrete. It's either under pavement for roadways, or it's under driveways. There are some sidewalks. There's very, very little green space between the units themselves. These don't be fooled by the architectural rendering of the townhomes. They're lovely, and I think that the townhomes are very nice, they're very similar to our own. We don't have a problem with it being developed as townhomes. We don't have a problem with the types of townhomes. It's simply a matter of the dense economy of people here. And where are these people going to go? When they do things like, when the kids want to play, when the dogs are going to be walked. And we're concerned they're going to come into our community and do it on our green space, which is privately maintained by us. They can certainly go to the King County Forest Reserve and get to their bike way and go there, but they have to travel over our property to get there. We think that this is a problem that's in the middle, and we hope that, uh, your commission will see that this is a potential problem. This is a real problem, and that to address it, there would have to be a reduction in, you know, the units that are being proposed. So basically, that's, that's our objection, that's our concern.
All right, thank you. I'm looking to the developer representative tonight to have note of these questions and maybe come on up and provide some answers when we're done hearing from the petitioners. I'm sorry, the, the public here. So is there anyone else in the audience tonight who wanted to comment on this petition? All right, I don't see anyone else coming up. So now is your opportunity. Please, if you can, if you'd like to, you don't have to, but if you'd like to answer the questions that were posed, you can certainly do that. We'll also look to staff for comments about the, the density, but if you'd like to comment on just what was asked, I would, I would appreciate it.
I just have one comment. I know the new codes that are required by the City of Elgin require greater distances between the buildings than what they did in the previous development. It may look dense, but it's implemented factors in what the real land mass is, it's, it's countable, and that's really all I want to say. We have a little bit more space between our buildings than they do between garages.
Well, look to staff, is there anything that was brought up by the public comments? Unfortunately, you're referenced as being an expert in this as far as density or other things, or anything you want to, to comment on?
Chairman Cox, in doing some of the research on some of the other developments that are within close proximity, obviously the reserve is directly to the north, that has a significant amount of floodplain and wetlands which are just not buildable. If the developer had the availability to have a clean slate of land like you see here currently, they would have, well, they would have gone above and beyond what they show there currently. So with this site being primarily farmland, we've created a, a development that we feel houses enough density that's going to create enough synergy for the rest of the development as future commercial comes in. We're also looking to make sure that we can tie roadstubs together. We just don't want a development just to have, end a road stub and not connect to another development. That's, that's been a huge issue from a fire protection and a safety perspective. This gives another second opportunity for fire police and so forth to get to the southern end of, of the reserve developments, to go into the circuitous route from Hops, pass the Sam's Club, and into the southern portion of the development of the reserve. I believe Tall Oaks Townhome Development has a very similar net density, and when you look at net density in our zoning ordinance, you basically strip away open space, any of the right-of-way dedications, and also the detention. This parcel has Reed Road and Reserve Road is seventy-foot rightaways, proposed as seventy-foot rightaways, which is our collector road standpoint, which is the reason why we're connecting to the reserve, is so that there is a collector road that runs from Hops to Bowes Road. There's also going to be at least a fifty-foot right-of-way dedication along Hops for the future development of Hops Road. As you can tell in your staff report, there is another development that will be in front of you shortly for a two-hundred-and-eighty-unit development, multifamily unit development. They'll pick up the other half of the right-of-way, and the additional east-west road on the north end of the development is a sixty-foot right-of-way. The, the last access point going westward is a sixty-foot right-of-way, so you strip all that acreage out, what you have left over has a slight difference or a slight increase in density, but overall, compared to the other developments and compared to, whether it's the reserve or the Tall Oaks Townhomes, this is in similar vein, so we're comfortable with it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the commission have any, just questions or discussion based on what we just heard? Commissioner Wildemuth?
Maybe just a clarif, a clarification on the comment about going, I guess, concerned going to the green space of the other property. Could someone walk me through, or maybe staff walk me through, the flow of people like going from this development to another green space, and like, why would they, you know, stop at that development to use their green space, or what?
Denise will be able to, to run through the site plan, but sidewalks are going to be on all the public streets.
Okay.
Just like any other city project. We're connecting, we're not trying to isolate subdivisions from one another. The reason why you have sidewalks on public streets is so you can traverse through different developments. This isn't an isolated subdivision, we're not trying to isolate subdivisions. So everyone who lives in the reserve should have the opportunity to go north, whether it's walking, driving, walking. You shouldn't restrict someone from going from one development to another, which I don't believe is the case at all. So there's plenty of ways to get back and forth going north and south, depending upon what people want to do.
And I'll just point out that the sidewalk, existing sidewalks that are within the reserve subdivision will continue along both sides of reserve extensions, so there will be pedestrian connections.
Any other questions? Commissioner Abwali, Commissioner Jones?
Can you just show us on the map where that, the next one, the two-hundred-and-eighty-unit apartment complex you mentioned in the packet, where, where is that in relation on the map here?
This will be down south.
Correct.
South of Hops Road.
Thank you.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
All right, thank you. So we, actually, we'll look back to you for any final comments or closing comments that you might have.
Our staff don't have any additional comments. As we've presented to you, we are recommending approval of this petition, subject to the conditions outlined in our packet.
Okay, thank you. So we can move forward with the agenda as far as this petition, which would be fourteen dash twenty-two, fifteen dash twenty-two, and sixteen dash twenty-two. The chair will entertain a motion for those petitions.
I move to recommend that City Council approve petition number fourteen dash twenty-two, fifteen dash twenty-two, and sixteen dash twenty-two, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet, and to adopt as the findings of the commission, those findings also within our packet. We're still at historically low inventory levels, so let's get building.
Is there, okay, is staff, please call a roll.
Commissioner Abwali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wildemuth?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion is approved, five to zero.
All right. That'll be a recommendation to City Council. All right, moving on to the last petition on our agenda for tonight. It actually has three numbers, just like the last one, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three dash twenty-two, to construct a new motor vehicle service station with a twenty-four-hour convenience store and accessory package liquor sale at thirty West Lake Street.
Okay, so the final petition before you is the application by Bluestone Net Lease Properties LLC as applicant, and Susan Metzger, trustee of the Susan Metzger Trust, and Karen G. Geller, trustee of the Metzger Family Trust, for the property owners, and who are requesting annexation, planned development as a map amendment, and conditional use to operate a twenty-four-hour convenience store with accessory package liquor sales, with several departures from the Elgin Municipal Code requirements, to construct a new motor vehicle service station, also known as the gas station. That also includes fueling stations for trucks, and with a convenience store open twenty-four hours with accessory package liquor sales, all at the property, commonly known currently as thirty West Lake Street in Bartlett and eight seventy-five Gulf Boulevard in Elgin. So as the previous petitions, we will start with the overhead map, the location of the property. This is a eight point three-two property that's currently mostly vacant. As you can see, it's sort of an irregular shape. It is located the northeast corner of the US Highway twenty and Lambert Lane. It is currently unincorporated Cook County, but it is within the City of Elgin ultimate planning boundary. The property is approved with a single-family home and just general vacant land that's used for farming purposes. As you can see, the property to the west is, it's got a shade over it, so that means that property is in the City of Elgin. That property is zoned PNB, Planned Neighborhood Business District. That property has improved the car wash, although not shown on the aerial map, but it's a car wash that was recently completed and also recently opened up. To the northwest are properties that are zoned PSFR one and PCF. Those properties are part of the Oak Ridge subdivision. To the north are properties that are in unincorporated Cook County, also zoned, I should say, also include single-family homes. To the east is a pump house for water department of the Village of Bartlett, that's in the, in the Village of Bartlett. And then to the south, as you can see, are, is the, sort of stormwater detention for the Castle Creek Presidential Subdivision that is part of the City of Elgin. The kitty corner of this property in southwest is a trucking facility zoned PGI. Curbs' idea of the subject property, looking north. This is also before the car wash completion at the, the northwest corner of the, of the intersection. So the applicant is proposing to annex the property to the City of Elgin and develop a fuel center, also known as the gas station, for authorities. That would include a convenience store, and then would have canopies that cover the gas station, or fueling islands for both passenger cars and the truck stops. The proposal is to establish a PNB, Planned Neighborhood Business District, similar to the gas station zoning classification. And then the conditional use is to have the convenience store be open twenty-four hours, and then to also have accessory package liquor. to also have accessory package liquor within the convenience store for sale and for consumption off premises. As you can see, the proposed layout, the proposed development is concentrated in the southern portion of the property. In fact, it would occupy approximately 3.7 acres of the 8.3 acre property, which would leave about four and a half acres of the vacant space that will be to the north and to the northwest of the, of the gas station development. The convenience store would be approximately 5,612 square feet, as I mentioned, to be open 24 hours. The floor area of the gas station on the left here is fairly similar for all of Thorntons across the Chicagoland area. They would concentrate the alcoholic beverage in the north, in sort of the top-left corner of that, of that floor plan. There would be no onsite consumption of alcohol. The two canopies that are indicated here on the site plan, the one south of the building would be the canopy over the tent double-sided fuel islands for passenger vehicles. And then there would be a canopy for, that covers the fuel islands for the trucks. There would be four lanes and four fueling stations for the semi-trucks. Site would also include 39 parking spaces for passenger vehicles and then no parking The front elevation of the convenience store is indicated here on the right. As you can see, the building would be clad in masonry. In fact, masonry is proposed on all sides of the building, so the entire elevation. Similar masonry is featured on the two canopies, the, the brick columns extend all the way to the top of the canopy. The rooftop units atop the convenience store will be entirely screened from view from all sides. And then there will be no signs on the north side of the building. In fact, no signs are proposed on the east or west sides of the convenience store or the north side. And then there will be no signs on the north side of the canopies. Here is the proposed landscape plan for the sites. The line in red indicates the proposed six-foot solid fence. As you can see, this is sort of an extensive landscaping throughout the sites. These two features are two stormwater detentions that are north and northeast of the, of the gas station site. The six-foot fence would be a six-foot solid privacy PV fence of Lucroix color. The applicant is also proposing, as you can see, landscaping on the north side, north side of the fence. There is an existing access easement that essentially goes straight from the bulb of the Will Scarlet Lane, which is the street to the north. This, this access easement extends to the south, although it's not improved, and that was created for the Bartlett Fire Protection District. The applicant has come to terms and will vacate that access easement and sort of reroute it to follow the proposed driveway with access to Lambert Lane, so substantial improvement for the fire access to, to Will, Will Scarlet Lane. They will get improved access all the way to the bulb. There would be a gate across the fence and then this area between the bulb and the actual park line would be, would not be paved, it would rather be a surface that vehicles can drive on in case of emergency. But in, in general, this area would be, one wouldn't know that there's an access unless you're part of the Fire Protection District that, that knows that. The applicant has agreed and will, will install the required public sidewalks along the entire length of the property's frontage along Route 20 and then along the entire frontage of the property along Lambert Lane, extending all the way to the residential subdivision of the northwest corner. The public sidewalks will have connections to the building, both right here from Lambert Lane and then one access point from the south end from, from Route 20. Access, so the proposed development, as you can see, will have one right-in, right-out access from Route 20 and then a full-access driveway to Lambert Lane. With the proposed access to Route 20, which is under IDOT jurisdiction, IDOT has requested that the applicant makes substantial improvements to the intersection of Lambert Lane and Route 20. And I'll let the applicant speak more in detail about these proposed improvements, but essentially IDOT has designated this intersection as a high-risk and, and intersection that needs substantial improvement to enhance the safety. So the applicant will make several improvements to the, the intersection, including high visibility, crosswalks, pedestrian signals, ADA improvements, and most importantly, the installation of new traffic signals that include protected left-turn arrows for eastbound and westbound movements on Route 20 for vehicles making left-turn movements onto Lambert Lane. And again, I'd let the applicant speak to that if necessary, but those are the improvements that are needed, requested by IDOT and will have to be constructed as part of this development. Proposed development includes several departures from the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The first one is regarding the fence. Generally, between a building and a street, the city only allows four-foot-high open design fences, as you can see, or the previous slide, it was indicated that they're showing a six-foot fence that extends west of the building. This area is the area in question. Staff has requested, they've agreed to install a six-foot fence to enhance that screening and buffer from the residential uses to the north. Wall sign, they have a sort of a branding type of sign that is on the front elevation that sits on the front canopy. It's kind of indicated right here. Normally, the city allows signs that are sort of affixed to the face of a building. In this case, they have a sign that's kind of sits on the canopy. City does not have any concerns about that and it's, it's a sort of a branding element of Thorntons brand, so staff does not have any concerns with that. And then a number of canopy graphics. So generally, one graphic is allowed on a canopy. This slide here indicates on the truck fueling canopy on the south side, it's going to include two signs, essentially one for the brand and then the other one that says truck exits to prevent any, any trucks entering the, the canopy from the south side. They would be entering from the north, you know, if they come in from, from the, from the east, they would kind of circulate around the site and then enter the, the fueling canopy right here and then circulate around and then exit onto Lambert Lane. Similarly, if they're coming from Lambert Lane, they would directly proceed eastbound and then enter the fueling canopies from the north side. The proposed development is required to meet the standards for map amendments, planned developments, and standards for conditional use. We provided our review of those standards in the packet and staff believes that all standards have been satisfied and therefore staff recommends approval subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. I didn't think there were any worth noting in here, but I'd be happy to explain any conditions in there. The one condition that's maybe a little bit unusual is the fact that we have requested and the applicant has agreed, this slide in particular, let me see if there's a better one. So this is the site plan of the proposed gas station. There is a access drive for the gas station, excuse me, for the car wash to the, to the west here. We've requested the applicant to put up a sign right here to alert vehicles that are waiting in queue at the light here to not block the access driveway, so they would install the sign and then strike the, the driveway in front of it to make sure that there's adequate access for the, for the car wash. There would be no alcoholic, alcohol consumption on the premises, I mentioned that earlier. The applicant will have to obtain a liquor license should the property be annexed and zoning approved for this. They will have to provide that recorded access, I should say, the platof easement abbreviation needs to be provided to the city prior to the easement, so the building permit should this project proceed. And I believe, I believe that is it. Do you have any questions? If you have any questions?
I appreciate how you say, I believe that's it, but you kept our attention, covered a lot of material and did so in a very positive, professional way, so we appreciate it. Commissioner Withermuth, do you have questions for staff?
No questions for staff.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
Commissioner Jones?
Thanks, Demir. IDOT classified that area as a critical safety tier. I mean, I, you and I talked about it a little bit this afternoon. At what point does IDOT, when would they incorporate plans of improvement or safety, addressing safety in their plans for any of these types of roadways like this? Because it looks like there's going to be, there has been and there can, will continue to be additional development there.
That's a good question. So IDOT essentially is requesting these improvements because the applicant is proposing a right-in, right-out access to IDOT, to Route 20, because under IDOT jurisdiction. So if this development did not request that right-in, right-out access, IDOT would not have any leg to stand on requesting that improvement to the overall interchange. Similarly, the car wash, what they proposed, and which wasn't in a, you know, it was only a few years ago that this went through the process, there, there was no access to Route 20, so there were no requirements to make improvements in the intersection. So with the proposed development, there's an opportunity to make improvements in the intersection. Without this, it's hard to say when IDOT would make these improvements. From what I understand, IDOT currently has plans to make improvements to Route 20, but it goes west of, of Shales Parkway, which is a few blocks to the west of here, so it goes from Shales across the, across the river and then out to, to I believe Nestle Road. There are some plans for those improvements to the corridor, but nothing in the next at least five to eight years in this area. So I, I would, I would suspect that the number of accidents increases the, the likelihood of the intersection improvements on their own, but it often, it often kind of happens with new development that surrounds this area that, that will kind of add additional traffic to the area that, that IDOT and municipalities use that as an opportunity to make those improvements.
And then I would just be curious, and I don't know if you have this answer, if maybe the, anybody from the community, if there's been any change or increase in traffic accidents at that intersection since the car wash has opened earlier this year?
No, we don't, we don't have that information, I'm sorry. Nothing that was, aware that we would have been there aware of at least.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Abouali?
No questions.
All right, I don't have any questions for you. So at this point in time, we look out to the group sitting with us, look for the petitioner team to come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Drew Zazowski, I'll spell that for you. Z-A-Z-O-F-S-K-Y. I think Demir is just pulling up a short presentation that I have for everybody. I am joined here by some folks from Thorntons and our engineering team who can help answer some of those more specific questions as they come up. Let's skip to the first one. So as you've seen in your materials, Thorntons is the proposed operator at this location. You should be familiar with them. They have several locations in the adjacent communities, South Elgin, Streamwood, West Dundee, Hanover Park, just, just to name a few. This is a company that's been operating in Illinois for more than 40 years. I'm quite confident that the folks at Thorntons would tell you that of their 200-plus stores that they have across the Midwest, that the Chicagoland stores are some of the strongest performing locations. And that success has really been built on the strategic nature of their selected real estate, their brand loyalty, and their operational expertise. This is, this is not a one-off location for Thorntons. This is part of a strategic expansion plan for Chicagoland. And Thorntons folks would tell you that this strategy must include working closely with local municipalities, a thoughtful and flexible approach to development, including mitigating impacts to the community, maintaining their environmental track record, and continuing to invest not only in new units, but a significant reinvestment in existing units as market forces change. Excellent. So we mentioned strategic selection of real estate. This site is no different. It's located at a signalized intersection, as most convenience stores with gas are. It's along a regional arterial, Lake Street, US 20, carries 42,000 vehicles per day, 3,300 trucks on US 20 every day. IDOT has classified, if you can jump to the next slide there, Demir, thank you, US 20 as a designated Class II truck route. So the routes in purple on the screen are the designated truck route by IDOT, which is Lake Street, over adjacent to this location. There's limited competition in the area, high barriers to entry for, for other competitors and, and overall good visibility. So for these reasons, this site is, is very attractive to Thorntons from a real estate perspective. So now that we've selected this location, we are seeking the necessary approvals from the city to develop the fuel center, which include, as Demir pointed out, annexation, planned development as a map amendment, conditional use permit. And so on the remaining slides, I'd like to focus on how we meet the criteria for these three entitlements, and we feel that they boil down to the following three factors. Are the site characteristics appropriate to support the use? And is the municipal infrastructure surrounding the site adequate? The project is in the interest of the public good and will not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood or community. And finally, that the land use is compatible with the city zoning code and long-range plan. So the first criteria here, as, as the staff report points out, of the eight and a half acres that we have in our contract, we are only really utilizing the front four acres. So the site does have plenty of acreage, the dimensions are appropriate, the topography is appropriate to support the use. As we pointed out, we're along Class II truck route, adjacent to a signal, and we have all the necessary utility infrastructure within the vicinity of the property, which can support the project. And we are implementing a stormwater management system that will act as a natural buffer to the rear of the site while accommodating the project's stormwater appropriately. Second zoning criteria, which we feel is really the most critical, that this project is in the interest of the public good, does not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood. Just the very nature of the use is for the public convenience. We've seen the C-store industry and Thorntons in particular are headed towards a more food-centric approach inside of the store. This includes fresh food, deli case, gourmet coffee offering, grab-and-go breakfast and lunch items, among others. And those offerings continue to change and adapt. In addition to the folks who will be served by this store locally in the immediate trade area, where there's not a grocery store or another C-store, we believe it will also serve those commuters on the roadway network, so over 100,000 people in Elgin, 40,000 people in Bartlett, another 40,000 in Streamwood, all who will be served by this location. As Demir mentioned, this project is under review by both the city and the IDOT regarding the traffic. I think we're on our second round of review with IDOT and so far we've learned that the signal is a critical safety tier intersection, which means before we got involved in the project, IDOT was alerted to the, the crash history at this location, specifically T-bone crashes, and has asked us to implement a protected left-hand turn movement. So you're coming down Lake Street and you want to make a left onto Lambert, currently you have a, a green ball, you have to time your movement to miss oncoming traffic. We'll eliminate that phase of the inner, phase of the signal and implement a protected left, so you have a dedicated left-turn arrow oncoming traffic yields and you make your left turn. But let us know if you have any questions on that specifically. So we are adding traffic to this intersection, but we will be mitigating that impact by modernizing the signal, adding the protected left, making the signal safer as required by IDOT, we agree to do that. Optimizing the signal timing to provide as much green time as possible to Lambert Lane to allow folks to, to get out. Restriping portions of the intersection to make turning movements more clear. And we're also providing a right-in, right-out driveway on US 20 to minimize the impact to Lambert Lane. Now, we, we know there are concerns about traffic, but you have to remember with these types of developments, these fuel center developments, 60% of the traffic are folks that are already on the roadway network today, we call it pass-by traffic. From a truck perspective, the projected types of developments, these fuel center developments, sixty percent of the traffic are folks that are already on the roadway network today, we call it pass-by traffic. From a truck perspective, the projected truck counts, which are considerably high in our study, make up about ten to twelve percent of the generated traffic at the location. And of this percentage, we expect that only a small portion of those trucks are the large trucks. But we also expect landscape trucks, the Amazon trucks, FedEx, UPS trucks, and other single-unit trucks to utilize this facility. These are the trucks that serve the community, deliver your packages, mow your lawn. These are the trucks that need a place to fuel, just like, just like we do, and that's the consumer we're trying to cater to with our diesel facility at this location. From a buffering standpoint, we are keeping the mature tree lines adjacent to the residential neighborhoods. You can see in this first photo, which is looking northwest, approximately at our Lambert Lane access, you can see the mature tree lines of the Oak Ridge subdivision there. And similarly, on the, on the next slide, back behind our store in the stormwater pond area, looking north to Sherwood Oaks, this is the existing mature tree line that we will be maintaining. So in addition to the mature tree line, we'll be planting over a hundred and thirty trees on the property in strategic locations along our boundary. We are keeping a large buffer on the northwest corner of the property that will remain undeveloped as part of this application. You'll see it noted there, sort of northwest, not colored in on the screen. Any future development of that parcel would require city approval, similar public hearing process as we're in tonight. And as Demir mentioned, we are implementing a six-foot tall PVC fence along the rear edge of the vehicular use area to block any headlights and further limit visibility from the adjacent properties. We did receive a letter from a resident, sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name, Ms. Zaminski, Zaminski, I'm not sure if she's here, hello, regarding your concerns with gas odor, pollution, underground storage tanks. So we did prepare this slide to kind of touch on that a little bit. You may remember years, years ago, you would smell gasoline as you were refueling. All cars since 2006 are now built with what's called a ORVR system, which is essentially just a fancy name for a carbon filter. So as you're, you're fueling your car, the liquid gas rises in your tank, top layer of gas fumes actually is pushed into this carbon filter and is reused by your engine when you restart your car. So there are no fumes escaping during, during refueling for the passenger vehicles. In addition, from a truck fueling perspective, the EPA in 2010 implemented that all medium and heavy-duty diesel engines need a SCR and DEF system. The SCR system stands for selective catalytic reduction, and when combined with DEF, which stands for diesel exhaust fluid, the result is that those diesel fumes, or smog, are converted into nitrogen and water byproducts, neither of which are harmful to the environment. And we will be offering DEF at this, at this location. So in summary, really, there's been a jump in technology and federal oversight as far as lowering emissions for passenger and those heavier trucks, and that will continue. So that was kind of from a vehicular use standpoint. It also asked about the underground storage tanks. This facility will have two sets of underground storage tanks. These tanks are regulated by the state fire marshal and inspected prior to point of use. Technology on these systems has also drastically changed from seventies, eighties, nineties, and these tanks are now double-walled instead of single-wall, and they are now fiberglass instead of steel. They are monitored twenty-four-seven by Thornton's team. Thornton's has an incentive to ensure that they operate these tanks safely and in accordance with the law. They have an excellent environmental track record and are flat-out dedicated to the safety of these systems. And lastly, the zoning criteria, number three, from a land use perspective, we do feel that this use is compatible with the uses along the US-20 commercial corridor. This corridor is bookended by existing commercial and light industrial uses. If you want to flip just quickly, Demir, to the next slide, you can see to the west, south, and then bookended to the east with car dealerships on US-20. We do believe that the traffic on US-20 does lend itself to auto-oriented uses, as is pointed out in the staff report. And we do want to point out that while we will be serving the existing truck base on US-20, that this is not a truck stop. We mentioned earlier that we're only utilizing the front four acres of the development. We looked at providing truck parking, a quick-service restaurant, a drive-thru, cat-scale, larger building at this location, but ultimately believed it would not be appropriate for this location. Instead, we have provided no designated truck parking, no overnight parking for trucks, no truck stop amenities, no scale, no showers, no laundry. This facility is truly meant to service these trucks along this border in more of a pump-and-go format. And then just the last slide here, Demir, and just some other benefits associated with the project. In addition to being a, you know, a public resource for the existing commuter base in the adjacent neighborhoods, this project will help fix the existing safety problem at this intersection. This project is a large tax generator for the community, for all of Elgin, including sales tax, locomotive fuel tax, property tax revenue. Fuel Center does have a unique revenue stream because there is a locomotive fuel tax in Elgin, and we expect this project will generate over a quarter of a million dollars a year in motor fuel tax revenue for Elgin to be used on future public projects. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions for us that are on the board.
I appreciate you bringing that up. We'll definitely take that opportunity. Start with Commissioner Jones.
I don't think so, not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Obwali.
Of the two-hundred-plus other Thornton's, have you been this close to subdivisions before?
We have, yes. We did an analysis of the Chicagoland locations, and greater than fifty percent of the Thornton's locations in Chicagoland are adjacent to residential.
Have you seen any problems with it? Has anything come up from the residences in those locations?
Hi, Kate, for a letter, I'm going to fill in this last name is B-E-R-L-I-N-E-R, I guess, one oh six East Main Street, along the, to answer your question, we have quite a few of those improvements in the Chicagoland area, fifty percent. We do have stores across, we've got all adjacent residences. We have had minimal issues with residences. The only ones that we have potentially had, that we could actually tell stories of, there will be one thousand percent upfront, have been issues where there's been trash that is on the yards, things like that. And immediately upon any notification that we've got extra trash in the yards, we will be putting up any kind of protective barrier, that's one of the reasons we put the fence up. It does keep trash that might flow across the lot going into adjacent residences, but we also go along to patrols where we actually have people who will circulate the entirety of the lot and clean up trash.
No safety hazards or anything?
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Before I head to my right, I do want to give Commissioner Jones an opportunity to ask her a question.
Thank you. Can you tell us a little bit about the community outreach you've done on this project with the subdivision and the area surrounding it?
Sure. So Drew Zazowski again. We did meet with, or I met with some folks on Little Scarlet Lane last Friday, had a good discussion on the site, I think a few of them are here. I did reach out specifically to the properties that directly touch our property, did reach out to 911 Oak Ridge, 907 Oak Ridge, 903 Oak Ridge, the three properties in the Oak Ridge subdivision that directly apply to our location. I actually stopped by and dropped some information off, a bigger-sized plan. I had heard it was a little bit tough to read the staff report with my, my business card, I did not hear back from those folks of those three single-family homes, but I did hear back from some of the folks on Little Scarlet Lane, and we did have a robust discussion. I have some notes from that meeting. We're going to be working with the neighbors on the tree species selection along the rear of the property. There was some concern about what's it going to look like in the winter time, so we're actually going to work with our landscape architect to provide those PVCs to the neighbors and have them kind of pick and choose what might work for them. We were asked to potentially extend the fence line along the rear property to enhance screening specifically for 251 Scarlet Lane. We're going to incorporate that, I'll work with Demir on adjusting the fence line. Swapping trees from the south side, you can picture it, we have the six-foot tall PVC fence, we have trees that kind of face inward towards the Thornton's. The thought was, hey, if we're going to be looking at this fence, how about some trees on the backside of that fence instead of the front? That's absolutely on the table. We can ship some of those trees around, we can add some trees, but it was a good comment from, from the neighbors, and we will implement that. Working with the general contractor when we're under construction on traction debris, we won't have that fence in place until the final condition, so what I communicated to them was, let's continue the dialogue. This project is going to be ongoing for quite some time. They've got my information. When we do select a general contractor, putting them in touch with the superintendent so that they can communicate with them if there are any issues during construction, that was an important item brought up. And then working with the neighbors on the fence color. We're open to suggestions on that, and, you know, these are things that we can absolutely implement and want to continue to have a robust dialogue with anyone else who might offer other suggestions.
In those meetings, so in our packet, there was some reference to September, some letters sent out on September sixth and emails. Prior to that, was there any communication or networking with this, with the neighborhood, with the subdivision?
There was not.
Nothing prior to September sixth?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Valdez.
Were they, or are they, any concerns with the linings? Is this is going to be a twenty-four-seven?
I didn't hear any concerns from the neighbors that I spoke with. We could talk a little bit about lighting. This is a all LED lighting facility, and the technology today allows you to screen from light coming backwards, so the light only moves forward. And we can add those, I think they're, they're part of the standard lighting package, I believe, to not have any lighting trespass behind where the light is located. And, you know, we need to follow the city developing code, which does not allow any light trespass from a photometric perspective at the property line. So no light trespass at the property line, and we try to eliminate that glare by adding those shields on the poles that are kind of at the perimeter of the, of the site. Didn't come up during my initial discussion, but we will be implementing that.
No more questions. Commissioner Wildermeath.
Yeah, just a little more specific on the, the left turn and the light. I'm generally just concerned about the, the amount of traffic in that left turn there. I'm just curious on the, the protected signal, and will it be just, you know, a left turn on green, or is there going to be a amount of time, there's someone rando that are just, you know, flashing yellow for an extended period of time? I'm just kind of worried about cars that are zooming past there, they turn on a flashing yellow and, but just with the amount of traffic there, and, and maybe that's for future conversations with IDOT, but I'm generally just concerned about the traffic there in that turn.
Yeah, so it won't be flashing, it'll be a solid green. So we'll work with IDOT and their signal team to re-optimize and kind of re-time the signal, adding in that left turn, dedicated left turn movement, so no flashing arrow.
Okay, thank you. I do not have any questions for you, just want to, whether we agree with every little item in your presentation or not, I'll leave that aside. Just want to compliment you on a, on a very thorough presentation. You presented a lot of information that hopefully will also answer maybe upcoming questions, and so I do definitely want to compliment you on that, as well as the outreach and other things that you've shown us here tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate petitioner team coming up. Now is the opportunity for those of you in the audience that have quite a sign-up sheet in front of me with quite a few names, a couple who drew and cater part of the development team, so we'll definitely just skip over you, since I believe you've had your opportunities already. So we'll start with the, the sign-up sheet, but if there are those of you in the audience who decide that you want to comment, we'll give an opportunity at the end, so don't feel like you're going to be slighted. We'll start with Jim and Patty from 871 Oak Ridge Boulevard. Are you here, would you like to comment? If you can, again.
Patty Basic, B-A-S-I-C-H, 867 Oak Ridge Boulevard. Okay, first, as an aside to the issue at hand, is there a reason why Elgin only puts in these little stinky signs of notice of public hearing, which in our case was placed on Galt Boulevard in the weeds? And we didn't see it until the grass was mowed on Galt. And then it says, "Call 311." And I called 311 and asked what it was about, and the person I spoke with said she had no idea, she couldn't find anything listed for that site, and she would have, you called me, and you did it, and you called me and you explained it. But my, my point is, other, other communities have these big white boards with information about public hearings, the time, the date, what the proposal is, and we get this little sign in the weeds that we asked neighbors about, and half of the neighbors didn't even see the sign, and they don't know what it's about. So we tried to get a lot of people to go online and get the proposal. I don't know if they did, it looks like there's several people here, but that's one of my questions. So that's an aside to the, to the, you know, what we're talking about here. We, we as a neighborhood, we have so many concerns about that intersection, and thank you for asking if there's been increased traffic because of the car wash. Yes, there has. Has there been more traffic accidents? Definitely have, definitely. In fact, when we're leaving our subdivision, we have to sit there for two minutes in order to get out onto Lake Street on Galt Boulevard. That two minutes is taken up about probably thirty seconds if not more, because we have to wait to make sure that people are not flowing through the red light going west and going east. And it happens all the time. We witnessed accidents in front of us. The newest thing is people going westbound on Lake Street are using the left-turn lane going onto Lambert to pull in front of the cars that are at, that are on the eastbound, the westbound lanes, right and left lanes. They use that turn lane to pull in front of those cars and blast through. The dump trucks all blast through that. I don't understand how a improved green light is going to help this, you know, green turn light is going to help this situation at all. So I'd like some clarification on that. How is that going to help us as a community get out and in more safely? When the car wash went in, I stood here and I asked every one of you to please come and try, try to get in and out of our subdivision, not at ten o'clock in the morning, not at seven o'clock at night, during traffic hour. I don't know if any of you did, but the traffic is horrible. It's absolutely horrible, and we're taking our lives in our hands trying to get in and out of that subdivision. My other concern is, it says no alcohol consumption on-site. So it's a twenty-four-hour convenience store. Somebody's going to come in and buy alcohol. They're not going to drink it on-site, they're going to come to our streets, because if you come on our streets on Hilliard and on Galt every Friday and Saturday, there's trash, beer bottles, beer cans, all over the side of the street. So I, I, I'm not a believer in that somebody's not going to take their liquor and go somewhere else, they're going to come on our streets and drink it, like what's been happening. Let's see. The other thing is the access onto Galt from trucks coming in and out on Galt Boulevard, semi-trucks. And I understand the person that gave the, the presentation said not a great number of semi-trucks will be using that, but the semi-trucks across the street on Besties and that other trucking company, they block the intersection constantly. How are we as a community supposed to get out of our subdivision if there are trucks coming in? How are we as a community supposed to get out of our subdivision if there are trucks coming in and out of that gas station? As we discussed, we're not opposed to a gas station, the 24/7 convenience store, definitely opposed to. And the semi-truck gassing pumps, we're opposed to, definitely. So if there is any consideration from any of you to think about how we live. We only have two ways in and out of that. One is a right-out only onto Lake Street from Hilliard. And the other is a right-left out onto Galt Boulevard, from Galt Boulevard onto Lake Street. That's our only two accesses and addresses. So if you're considering this, think about living where we live. And trying to get in and out of there safely and in a timely fashion. Combined with the traffic from the car wash. It just doesn't make any sense to have, if you're going to pass this, please do not put an entrance or an exit on Galt. That's my concerns. Oh, now I have one more question. The gate, the gate, can you explain that gate to me, somebody?
We will certainly do that. We'll ask the petitioner team to come on back up or we'll look to city staff to describe that. So right now I'm just taking notes here as far as what those questions are. I'm sure the petitioner team is as well. And once everyone is done, then we'll give an opportunity for those parties to just discuss the items again that have been brought up.
Yeah, the question about the gate is, did I understand it to be used for the fire department? So if there's a fire in the subdivision behind us, they have to stop and open the gate to get back there? Is that what I'm understanding?
I believe it's an additional access, but like I said, we'll take this list, the question down and add it to the list that we'll address in a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So Jim was on the list as well. All right, we'll keep all of our comments at the mic, but I just wanted to give you the opportunities. I appreciate it. Sarah Siddiqui, 862.
Hi, my name is Sarah Siddiqui and it's spelled S-I-D-D-I-Q-U-I. And I live at 862 Oak Ridge Boulevard. I've written out what I'm going to write because I wanted to really put in everything that I was thinking. So first of all, the traffic light, that's my concern. The traffic light at Lambert and Lake is our only entrance, going eastbound on Lake Street. And it's our only exit going eastbound, I'm sorry, and it's our only, all right. So if we're on Lake, the only way we can get into our subdivision is to turn left onto Lambert. We cannot use Hilliard to get in that way. So that's the only way we can get in if we're going eastbound on Lake Street. And if we're in our subdivision and we want to go east on Lake Street, that's our only way out. Like there's not another way we can get out. So if you can see our Oak Ridge subdivision, how it's showing those streets, there's no other way to get out. There's no other street. That's our only way, in and out. Seeing that, allowing a business, and I'll get to it, saying that, allowing a business that's going to bring more traffic and especially trucks at this intersection is going to increase general traffic on Lake Street as well as increase the traffic accidents on Lake. They haven't fixed the issue at Lake and Shales, which is the next light over, by the way, after us. Lake and Shales where they have committees going, trying to figure out how to fix that problem and they haven't fixed anything. People have died. There are crosses at that, at that, at that subdivision, at that, sorry, intersection. And now we're adding another problem by putting this on Thorntons here in our neighborhood. Already with the short green light on Lambert, the traffic backs up, by the way. The traffic backs up all the way with just that. We get like two minutes to get out of that traffic, out of our subdivision. And during that time, if you're coming, you'll see, you'll think there's an accident or something. Because there's so many cars backed up both ways, because Lake is so busy. So, and when we do get a green light, only about three cars can go through before it turns yellow and it shuts off. I mean, if there's a truck there, I think only one truck can go through before we don't have a chance to get out. And we're not waiting two minutes, we're literally waiting like four, five. I mean, I have to, if I'm going to be going that way on Lake, I have to think in my head, I better leave like 10 minutes earlier than I should. Just so that I have enough time because of that light. So as it is, trucks are driving on Lake very often, do not stop when it turns red on Lambert. As residents here, we know this and we have to wait until the trucks and cars are at a complete stop before we go. I mean, I'm not talking about once in a while, like somebody blows that red light. And that red light, I mean, people are going 50, 60 miles an hour going through that intersection. And it's almost maybe every other time I'm there, I have to sit there and wait and wait until everybody goes. And I see everyone has stopped and then I go. Because we've had neighbors get hit, we've, I mean, there's always debris in that intersection, so something's getting hit all constantly. And this is the reason I think they don't stop. It's because the speed is really high, the trucks can't stop because they're in momentum and they're going through. And if you're coming west on Lake Street towards our neighborhood, there's a curve in the street and you can see that curve right there. People can't see that light. They can't see that there's an intersection there. And that's why they can't stop coming this way. Because when they're coming, they're coming and it's going like downhill, it's like coming towards us. And if you pass our neighborhood, there's a bridge there. And that bridge also goes over, over train tracks. So see where the train tracks are going right there, next to Safety Clean? Those are train tracks and there's a bridge that goes over it. So people, so when, we have a red light here at Lambert, all the cars are stopped up to that bridge sometimes. So people are coming as fast as they can because they're thinking it's Lake Street and let's go. But there's cars that are stopped right there. And there's been accidents that happened there too, because people bump into each other thinking that it's clear and it's not. So there's a lot of issues with this intersection and traffic and I don't think a green arrow is going to solve any problems. Because that's not the problem. It's the shape and the winding of that road. The city of Elgin plows, by the way, they plow and salt this entrance area to our neighborhood and our entire neighborhood last. Many times it's a disaster, it's really dangerous. I've seen cars, I've seen buses, it's not salted, it's not cleaned. We're like the last ones to be cleaned because we're at the very edge of Elgin. It's right before Streamwood, right before Bartlett, and nobody comes to plow that area. At least not in the beginning. Sometimes it's a sheet of ice too, because it's not been salted, it's not been plowed. I also want our neighborhood to continue to be a safe area. I've lived here for 16 years, I'm raising my three kids here. I don't want there to be video gaming, which nobody mentioned, because that was also in the paperwork. Or liquor sales in walking distance. I don't want there to be 24 hours of bright lights. And last, I want to mention that I know they're like, oh, you know, we're going to add a sidewalk and make it a part of your neighborhood. Where the car wash made the, where it made the sidewalk, it ends in a ditch. There is no sidewalk connecting to it. They have broken up our streets, they like made a mess of them. They've plowed through some of the landscaping that our neighborhood had, they never fixed it. I mean, I don't know if you guys have seen that, it's like, it's like all mangled. One of the trees is like half-dead and that's all from them. And then they like dug everything up and they put a, you know, supposedly it's supposed to be brass, but it's literally weeds. And the weeds were so tall, like in that whole retention area next to that curb there behind Everclean. It was so high, like my son came back and he was like, he's like, he had all these scratches on his leg because he rode his bike on that sidewalk. And he came back because they did not, they're not mowing that part. And then they came through and mowed like a little part there. And it's like a big mess. So now you're going to leave a big mess on the other side too, where they're not going to develop that land. It's going to look like, like why would you leave like a big plot of land just undeveloped and just left there for nothing? So, I mean, I have a lot of concerns about this, it's not just, I mean, safety first. I mean, honestly, my son's about to start driving, he's 14. I don't want to see him getting into a huge accident and, you know, because of, because of a business that wants to put their business there. That's my number one concern. And number two, it just, like I said, safety and also, I'm like so angry, I'm sorry. But yeah, safety, I guess. And that's my biggest concern is the safety and the fact that, you know, there would be alcohol, video gaming, all that kind of stuff. And like she said, people are going to just pull in there and like, you know, and drink or do whatever into our neighborhood. And there's no other access out of our neighborhood, which concerns me as well. Thank you very much, Lisa.
Ma'am, one question for you, just so we can understand. You referenced they a few times were knocking down landscaping and not mowing, is that the Everclean site?
Yep.
Okay, that's all, all right, thank you.
Oh, that was one, I'm sorry, one more, last thing.
Sure.
Everclean closed our road, that our only access, by the way, like I said, to turn east onto Lake Street. It was closed multiple, multiple times during traffic because they were doing something and they closed it down. And we couldn't use our one point of access to leave our neighborhood. We would have to go, and you realize, once we turn right onto Lake, you have to go all the way down to Shales Parkway and turn into Bluff City Road and then come back out in order to come back the other way. I mean, that's ridiculous that we can't, we can't like live our normal lives and now you're going to do this for how many more years? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Peggy Crane. All right, come on up. So since I'm guessing your name's Peggy, if you could please state. Yes, sir. All right, there you go. Sounds good, all right, thank you. So come on up and tell us your thoughts.
Approximately 1,250 feet west where this project is going in is one of the most dangerous intersections in the state of Illinois. That's not my determination, that's the Illinois Department of Corrections determination. And what we're going to take, put the development in, and we're going to throw into the mix alcohol. That's crazy, it makes no sense at all. I cannot believe that the petitioner, it suffered the economic loss of liquid equipment itself, that location to endanger the people with the traffic involved in that area. My next issue is, could somebody show me what the pattern would be for a semi-truck coming through this particular area? While you're stepping up, I just want to make this one question. It's appeared from the courtesy copy, the notification, there were five gas outlets. In your presentation earlier this evening, you indicated four, is that the reduction is down to four?
That is correct. Initially, the plan's indicated five, there are four, so there are four.
Okay, I just want to make sure that they're.
Correct. And I went through the site circulation during my presentation, I'll do it again.
I get, just the numbering of the, I mean, similar.
Understood.
Did that understand?
Understood. Two entrance points to the site. For westbound traffic on Route 20, a truck can enter or a car enter here. But if a truck enters, they would go northbound, go around, enter from the north side. This is the fueling stations for the trucks. Once done, they would exit this way and they would have to go and exit onto Lambert Lane and then southbound. If they're traveling eastbound on Lake Street, I should say, Devilla Street, they would go up here Lambert Lane, enter right the site here and then proceed eastbound and then enter from the north side of the fueling stations.
The truck that's coming westbound, does 360 plus an 800 be in that maneuver?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
The truck that's coming westbound through 360, the maneuver, the position, they can then suffer that one and then exit.
Well, as I said, they would, trucks would enter, proceed to make southbound movement here, enter the fueling stations. Then they loop around, go northbound, and then they exit onto the Lambert Lane. So once they proceed to the fueling stations, make a left around here, you go northbound and then you make another left to exit onto Lambert Lane.
I don't have any additional comments about that maneuver, other than you just watched what that maneuver has to be with this semi. Pole thing is a small area. Another question is the maintenance of the, I am sorry, since this is a planned development, the retention area, which is maintained, I'm assuming by the petitioner in this manner?
That's correct.
Okay. That still subsequently can be rezoned at some future time, is that not correct?
It's not correct.
If you can take the entire property reading on it? You can't?
You can petition anything, but there would have to be changes to this development. If you want to build on top of a stormwater retention, you'd have to do something with a stormwater retention. Anything's possible, yes. Any petition can be filed, that's correct.
All right, next name on the list is Steve Mings from 1721 Pin Oak. All right, Sheri Boulo, 886 Oak Ridge.
Sheri Boulo, E-O-W, assigned. I agree 200 percent of what she's saying. A left turn arrow is not going to do anything for the trucks that blow that light every single minute of every single day. When you try to come out of that light, that intersection, you can't. You have to wait, like she said, to stop because dump trucks, semis and cars, but mostly the dump trucks and the semi trucks, view that light as optional. And same thing goes for the Estes Trucking Company. They don't care if they blow the light. There have been, I would say, in one week of me coming in and out of there, going to work every day, most likely I have to slam on my brakes as I'm heading out or like you said, just stop till the light's not even, the arrow's not even green anymore to make sure they're actually going to stop. Mostly they stop, if they realize you're pulling out and they slam on their brakes. And the T-boning isn't the problem from the west to the east when we're trying to leave the subdivision. It's from us coming out, trying to turn east out of the subdivision. There's a solid green arrow there, that doesn't mean the trucks are going to pay attention to it. It's going to be the same thing if you have trucks coming westbound on 20. That green arrow isn't going to make any more difference to them than the one we wait for. There's going to be more T-bone accidents because they just keep coming. Unless you find a way to police that better, it's going to result in more accidents, more deaths. Like you said, there's debris on the ground every week, constantly. My daughter and her family also live in that subdivision. When I come out of there and my grandson's in the car with me, you always have to assume they're not stopping. Adding more semis to that street, that is the only truck stop from probably four or five miles minimum either direction where a semi can stop for gas. So there is, there may be X amount of, you know, they expect X amount of semis coming in and out of there. But if that's the only place to refuel, there's going to be a ton of trucks trying to get in there. Because it's the only place they can on 20. I can't think of a single other gas station from Panover Park all the way to the other side of Elgin and through where there is a place. That's why it's probably very lucrative, I'm sure. Because it's the only place they're going to be able to stop for gas. So you're talking about trucks waiting to get gas and waiting to get out of that gas station. And we are going to be stopped not being able to get out of the subdivision. Yes, the light is a problem, you know, if the light flukes or whatever. Don't want gaming and, you know, a lot of liquor sales, but, you know, I understand it comes with all gas stations, the liquor sales. But safety is number one. It is, she's right, you take your light in your hands trying to get in and out of that subdivision every single day. Nobody stops these trucks. There is no red light camera there. They just blow through there with no concern over who's trying to come in and out. Because, if I can point to something real quick? When you're coming down 1.
Again, I appreciate you pointing, I'm over here. I was just going to say, it's good that you're pointing, but if you can make your comments at the mic, it helps.
The stretch right there, past the cemetery, the aerial view is easier for me to show you, but that's okay, you get the idea. You want to hear? Right here, you're trying to turn eastbound out of our subdivision. It's a downhill curve. The trucks can't, that are coming down there now, don't even see the light. It's hard for us to see them, whether they're going to slow down or not. We look left and we wait and we try to say, okay, they're going to stop and they're not going to stop. What's it going to be today? If you have trucks. If you have trucks slowing down to turn right into this truck stop, that takes out our view of the other two lanes. So when the, so if you've got a semi coming westbound to turn into there, we now can't see if the trucks in the other two lanes are gonna slow down enough. And if we just chance it and pull out, we're gonna get T-boned. It completely blocks the line of sight from us being able to see. And if, if, like she said, if you come down that hill, you, and you're, or if you come out of our subdivision on Lambert and twenty, and you look left, you will see exactly what I'm talking about. There's only so many feet before that curves and you can't see. A truck stopping there completely takes that out. We can't see if the other trucks or vehicles are gonna stop until it's too late. I see many more accidents happening. I see a lot more deaths happening. And I just don't wanna be involved with my family or anyone else that lives in that area. It's a serious issue and it's gotta be addressed. A left turn, there's a left turn arrow there, makes no difference to the trucks. If they're, like she said, if the momentum is going, they're like, eh, looks like they're stopping, I'm just gonna blow it. And that's what they do every day, all day. I would say, I've had to stop and miss the light probably two or three times a week minimum, or I would've been. If you take away that line of sight coming down that hill from large tractor trailers waiting to turn in, we can't see anything coming down the hill. We have no idea if they're gonna stop. Because we won't be able to see them till they're already at the intersection. So, I don't think enough research has been done and I don't think people have done enough actual sitting there during, you know, between seven thirty and nine o'clock in the morning, same thing in the evening, to see just how hard it is to get in and out of that subdivision. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments and questions. Looking now at Jamie Walczak, six, I'm sorry, two fifty-one Will Scarlet.
Good evening, I'm Steve Walczak, Walczak, W A L, C Z A K. And I, I'm two fifty-one Will Scarlet, so we, we'll meet neighbors if this petition goes through. If I did get a chance to meet Drew. They seem very accommodating, they're open to some of our thoughts and concerns. I'll just kinda go through some of the stuff that we talked about and a few things that I had as I listened to comments tonight. The, the road going through for the emergency access, if somebody could just really clarify. I understand that where the gate would be coming out of the cul-de-sac by us, that would be gravel or something that they could drive on. But then it sounded like it's going to meet up with a paved path, is that, is that the idea? You don't have to do it immediately, but if you could kinda just express exactly where it is, how wide, what that material's gonna be. We talked about the fence and yeah, so selfishly, I'm all about the aesthetics, having to look at that. We're gonna come up with a landscape plan though, and I'm confident we're gonna come up with something that will, will block us when we move there. So, we didn't have to look at neighbors as much. And I appreciate your guys' willingness to work with us on, on that. I had concern about maintaining the landscape, so around the detention pond area, the trees. We talked about the level of landscape maintenance, is that going to be upon city ordinances? You know, I forget what the height level is. And it sounded like it was going to be, but that was one of my concerns, that all that area out there just doesn't kinda start getting overgrown. Because not a lot of people are looking at it, other than, other than certain neighbors. Semi noise from entering and idling, Mr. Crane commented on that as well. I don't know, hopefully with the vegetation going in, the fence, hopefully just a semi sitting there idling. And that would be far enough away that we wouldn't have to listen to that, but you can imagine having a piece of quiet time and having to listen to a semi idle as they go inside to do whatever they do inside. I hear the concerns on safety and it's horrible. I listen to car accidents all the time. I call nine one one frequently, just tell them it's, it's up at the intersection again. And I, I don't know why, and maybe this is something either the petitioner or the city could look into. I don't know who the policing authority is, Sarah. Is that, is that a combination, or is that the sheriff, or is that the state police? The reason I ask that is because I think I've seen one vehicle pulled over there, you know, in the past fifteen years. And it's possible that maybe if some going through red lights, tickets would be issued. Maybe some people will change some habits. You have so much construction coming off of Bluff City. You've got a ton of semis, things of that nature, and I think you're on point with the comment that, yeah, those are big trucks, a lot of thousands of pounds going through there. And, you know, when I'm pulling my trailer, I have a decision to make and there's a decision, either lock them up or you go. And I'm sure a lot of people are making the decision to go, because there's, there's not a lot of repercussions other than obviously getting into an accident. So, I welcome, I welcome the gas station. Looked at a lot of alternatives that I thought could go in there. Again, whether it's selfish or not, I looked at what could've gone in there and the impact that it could've had. I think there's gonna be some challenges with this, but as long as you guys continue to maintain and, you know, do what you're supposed to do with the property, I'm hoping we'll, we'll be neighbors like a lot. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next name on the list is Dan Peszek.
Oh, I'm a neighbor of the fellow who just talked.
Sir, I'm sorry, if you're gonna talk, I need you to come up here.
Okay.
Sorry about that, just wanna make sure everybody gets their chance to hear what you're saying, especially those who may be watching from home.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all good, all good.
I live at the end of Will Scarlet Lane also, and prior to all this construction going on, I built my house there thirty-seven years ago. Accidents have been going on even then, before all this stuff was happening, before Oak Ridge was probably there. It was just amazing, the big boom, we were here all the time. I met the other day with Julius Zosowski and Jamie and Stephen, and I concur with everything he just said to you. I do agree though, however, the biggest thing here is the accidents that happened on that strip of, of Route twenty. Something more should be done than I think just the light, and I think the police have to get involved. Maybe some big overhead things like they have on tollway, I don't know. But it's a tough situation right there. I'm not so sure that the gas station is gonna increase that or decrease it. But trucks are really tough though. Something should be done. I too welcome the gas station, but if there's gonna be more accidents, not a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up, sir. Next is Phil Belevic, twenty-six-hundred James. Part of the team. I see that. That's what that says, I apologize. All right, and then Karen Garcia is the last name on the list.
Hi, good evening, my name's Karen Garcia. Can you give me, why, do you get to the, I live at two ten Will Scarlet Lane? So I'm kind of at the end of the street, where Robin Hood and the Civil War come from. I have some questions I'm hoping to get clarified. One is in terms of signage for like gas prices. I'm not sure with the city of Elgin, or the state, heights and size and dimension. But I just would like some clarification on what it would look like if you drag it east to the westbound. On Villa, in terms of how that would be looked at? I know on the original documents that I had seen from Drew that neighbor shared with me, there was some question about whether there would be charging stations for cars, for rental cars. I noticed that wasn't on the report, or at least where I usually see it from the audience. So, I would like clarification where that might go on that proposed property and if it would result in expanding past the dimensions that are being shown tonight. Again, I have questions about the access road and where the apartment, the apartment has been brought into that discussion as to what that might look like for access for the residence and short routes. I do also like some additional information regarding the fuel tanks in the ground. And it's, it's very nice that the, I believe in the presentation, it's at the state fire marshal, we're comics back, expecting prior to operation. But what does that look like for on both news? What is the expected lifespan of those fuel cells? I hope you're aware that we are all well-inseptic. And sewage is a big concern for us as we use that water for daily use. And I also have a question regarding how the development of this property is going to impact water around the entire subdivision. And development that happens on that back utility road has a forward impact on runoff coming from the very top of the subdivision by fifty-nine. And it causes all of the property and our plants to flood very easily. So I'm very concerned that we get the correct gradient when turning a turn around as this property potentially gets developed. And like my neighbors had expressed, there is some concern about liquor sales, whether or not we really need liquor sales at this gas station. It's my understanding that the streamside location does not sell alcoholic beverages. So that, thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming up. I've exhausted the names on the list that I have, but there are others in the audience tonight. So, starting here at the front, I did see your hand go up first, you deferred to this other lady, but we'll start with you, ma'am. So come on up to the lectern.
Okay, my name's Elizabeth Chimalski, and I live in Oak Ridge subdivision, eight ninety-five Oak Ridge Boulevard. And I am very close, I will be very close to this development. And I sent a letter to the village and to Mayor Captain about my concerns, a lot of concerns. And you need to know that our subdivision is landlocked. We don't have, landlocked means that we don't have any other back road, just two little roads in front of Route twenty. And Lake Street is really, really very busy street at this, at this portion. People are going from like a little bit of hill, going down, and across the cemetery, that memorial, that is around Lake Street. So, speed is really high. And as other people mentioned here, there have been many accidents in our intersection on Lambert. And it's going to be more. And not only that, also the value of the homes that we live in is going to go down. And we will see more maybe crime, trash of our backyards, we don't know. They're going to serve alcohol, they're going to have twenty-four hours to open. And we don't know what's going to happen. But definitely the value of our subdivision that we paid a lot of money for is going to go down, that's no questions. And I'm very much concerned about this. Because this is, you know, this is my retirement and my, my money that I spent to, to have, have them back in some time. And I may not. So, you know, for me, it's a big concern. And just one second, six, six-foot fence PVC, how is that going to beautify our subdivision? From our point of view, from, from the citizens? And PVC fence, pollution. Pollution, I'm very much concerned about pollution, crime that may happen. You know, people who are leaving the twenty-four-hour convenience store with the liquor in the hand, they may not go back wherever they were heading. They may go to our subdivision and, you know, things may happen. And what else? We have this little street, small street, we got just this street for like six or seven years. When, when we moved into the subdivision, we just got one street that we couldn't make a left turn, only the right turn. Finally, this curved second road was built for us. And this road is extremely busy now. I cannot even imagine how you can add semi trucks and big cars and something else to Lambert Street. This is not, this is not major road that such huge semi truck can, can maneuver even. This is my concern. That's, that's the value of the homes, it's very important. Accidents, accidents to happen, more of them, very important. Health, they, health, pollution and everything else, it's extremely important. I think this is not a good place for, for such a, for such a, not clean business. I, I don't think so, especially to, to this subdivision. Because Sherwood Forest, these are big lots, very, you know, very beautiful subdivision. Our subdivision is also very pretty subdivision. And suddenly, you know, somebody got an idea of a gas station, that's good. But I, I believe that city should take our concern, so many families, into consideration before the final approval is going to grant it to the petitioner of the gas station.
Thank you. All right, come on up, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Montgomery, spelled S T E F as in Frank, A N Y. Montgomery, M O N T G O M E R Y. I live at two twenty-five Will Scarlet Lane, approximately four houses down from my two neighbors who are gonna be right next to the property. I was not given any notice regarding any of this going on, but from a neighbor that just told me on Sunday. So I would normally be much more prepared to speak and have more data and information that I would've collected myself regarding all these accidents, traffic patterns and all of that. So I just made a short little list that I'm sure will be, you know, just echoing what everybody else has said. The barrier of a six-foot tall fence, I look at my husband, he's six feet tall. So I'm five eight, he's a little taller than me, so he'll stand at the fence and can go on his toes and probably look right over it. That to me is an insignificant barrier. It also doesn't look nearly wide enough. As soon as I found out about this, I contacted a real estate agent and was told this will definitely negatively impact any future sale of my home by having this massive twenty-four-hour gas station. Not a little tiny one with four or five pumps, a massive gas station nestled right around two beautiful subdivisions. I am concerned about our groundwater, 'cause like a neighbor said, we are all well-inseptic. And even though these tanks might contain the gasoline, I'm worried about the whole construction process over however long that's gonna take and the disruption that that's gonna put to our water table. Has anybody done a water study on what the impact is gonna be for this? 'Cause normally that's something that should be done. Air pollution, there's going to be air pollution. Talking about how cars of two thousand and six and trucks of two thousand and ten means nothing. You're gonna have cars coming in and out of this gas station that are polluting and are idling and are drug, clearly driving in circles, and the semis coming in and out. That's ridiculous. The noise pollution, I can hear from where I live everything that goes on in the cemetery behind me and everything that goes on in Villa Olivia. So, to think that I'm not gonna hear the echoing conversations of what's going on at the gas station, there's gonna be an enormous amount of noise pollution. I also hear when they're calling the porters for cars at the gas stations, not only on Irving Park Road, but also on Lake. Park Road, but also on Lake Street. So that noise travels, so there will be huge noise pollution. The light pollution, again, I don't think there's anybody that's going to tell me that the lights that they're going to put up, not only in the way of, I mean, they're going to have to put a gas station sign up for the prices so high because if they're too low, they're going to be obstructing the view of the traffic coming in and out of the gas station. So it's going to have to be high, which means that light is going to be pointing near both those subdivisions. So the light pollution's going to be there. It's a twenty-four hour gas station, which we are now going to be inviting a ton of crime to a massive street thoroughfare of twenty coming from Plank Road all the way through to Hannibal Park to two ninety, or three ninety, whatever they're.
Three ninety.
Three ninety. There's going to be a huge thoroughfare. We're just inviting tons of crime, prostitution, drug dealing. Other communities have had these issues at intersections in Naperville. Again, I would have my details and my facts in my hand if I had more than forty-eight hours of notice of this meeting. But I am one hundred percent not for this gas station, and I would please ask the commissioners to not recommend this to the Elgin Board. The end. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I did, exactly. So we're talking about all these amendments and changes, and oh, we're going to talk with the neighbors about this tree and that tree and this barrier, we're going to expand it, we're going to work on all this. Who's going to hold anybody accountable for that work? Clearly, nobody's holding Everclean accountable for the trash mess they made. And during the construction, I got to listen to all the music played very loudly all day long for months while they were constructing that and all the debris that was on twenty and just everywhere, all the way filtering down into my area. So who's going to hold everybody accountable for that? Okay, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, working our way back, just going by section here. I think this section nods is good to go, right? Anyone else in this section, third row, fourth row? Come on up. Okay, we're good. Sir, come on up. Were you sworn in earlier?
No.
All right. And we'll just have you swear in with a court reporter. Is there anyone else, I'm sorry to interrupt you, is there anyone else who may have joined us who needs to be sworn in as well, maybe speaking? Might as well go ahead and do this. You can stay there, sir, if you want. All right, again, state your name, give us your address and tell us your thoughts.
Mike Siluka, seventeen twelve Castle Court. I live on the south side of Lake Street, just behind that potential condominium. I actually am in favor of it because there's nothing around us right now, so it'd be nice to be in, hopefully get some gas, close by, convenience store. That being said, I don't know if there's any thought into how the light will go to behind the potential condominium, the whole road. I don't know if there's going to be signage that will be shining directly into there or not, if that's going to address it all. So I don't know if I can follow up with. And the curbs on Lake Street are much more pronounced than those from I'm just dictating. They've always been there. Traffic's always been an issue. I don't, personally, I don't see a lot more traffic coming. It has been a problem, you know. I don't think they take vegetation back a little bit so we can see them on those curves a little bit, that would be helpful.
All right. Thanks for your comments. All right, so I think we got everyone in this section. Anyone in this section, address the front row. Let's see, fourth row, fifth row is mostly the petitioner team. We got other petitioners with us. Anyone else? Otherwise, we'll go to this gentleman in the back. Good evening.
Mike Trupicho, T as in Tom, R.I., P as in Paul, I.C.C.H.I.O. One-two-five Will Scarlet Lane subdivision just north of this project. If you could put up the first view for me, if I could ask you to, the overhead view that shows more of Lake Street. That one, thank you. As you see the subject property that they're showing there, you've addressed Lambert Lane and the problems they have with the traffic, and that's why that stoplight was put in further to the east because it was too close to the other curb. And as the gentleman said, the curbs on Lake Street are more pronounced than what you're seeing in the view here. And if you're having a right in and a right out to the east end of the subject property, when those trucks are turning into there, that's where you said they're going to come in and circle all the way around, the trucks that are following behind them, they're going westbound on Lake Street, they're not going to see them until they come around that curve, and they're going to have difficulty in stopping. As many people have said, we hear all the time the accidents on Lake Streets, the cars skidding, the near accidents, because they come flying around that curve and then they catch the stoplight in Naperville if they're going eastbound, or they see the stoplight in Lambert and they slam on the brakes. Now you're going to have an opportunity for them to stop before that, less time to see it and react to those trucks that are going to be turning into there. And it also is a right out, if I heard your presentation correctly, for cars, not the semi-truck, but you're going to have cars coming out of there trying to get up to speed and you're having trucks coming down that hill and coming around that curb, which lends quite a safety hazard there. So it's something I hope that you would consider. I don't know if IDOT addresses that or the city does, but it's definitely a concern. And we hear the car wrecks all the time. A lot of them happen in Bartlett, and Lake Street gets closed quite often. Now, I have two or three accidents just a little further east of this property on Lake Street, and they have the same ones as Shale Parkway, as was mentioned earlier, one of the worst intersections along this stretch of road. The other thing that you brought up in your presentation was that there was going to be signage just on the front facing Lake Street that there was nothing on that, we appreciate that, but with nothing mentioned in there about signs that are going to be not on the building, but as they've said upfront, posting the gas prices and everything else, where are those signs and how are they going to be facing? That wasn't presented in the presentation, if you could address that, please. Thank you.
The list of questions has gotten longer as the evening has progressed, and I did keep a list here. I see the petitioner team may be writing them down as well. But before we get to that point in time where we look to city staff and petitioner team to answer questions, just want to make sure if there are those who have not yet spoken, now is your opportunity. If it's one. As long as we don't start a huge cycle here, so, but again, we'll need you to come up front here. Want to give everybody the opportunity to speak. Don't apologize, ma'am, it's part of the process.
If I'm understanding this correctly, first of all, oh, I'm sorry, Sharon, S.A.H.E.R.R.I., last name is B.U.E.L.W., on eighty-six Oak Ridge floor. If cars are going to be coming out onto Lake Street from the gas station, is that correct?
That's what's reflected in the site plan.
Are prohibited from coming out of that entrance?
We will approach that.
If cars are going to be able to come out and turn left, they can't, right? But even turning right, like they said, that is, that curve, nobody coming down that street is going to be able to see a car in time if it pulls out, especially if there's a truck in the turn lane coming in.
Ma'am, I understand where you're going. You said you had a question, I think you've asked that, and now we're starting to repeat, so we need to.
The other question I had was in regard to what they said about no other Thorntons having issues with subdivisions as far as, you know, issues with something. How many of those are truck stops and how many are just gas stations? It'd be interesting to know how many of those, you know, issues with surrounding subdivisions were actually Thorntons that actually have a twenty-four-seven truck stop with semis compared to just the Thorntons gas station. And if you have gaming, I didn't even know that was an option, if there's going to be gaming in there, well, if the truck drivers are stopping to game, don't they have to park? They can't just fuel and go. If you're wanting somebody to sit there and gamble, they got to park their truck or let it sit and idle. So that is another.
All right, thank you. All right, so if there's nothing new, looking like there's some, some. One, all right, one question, and then seriously, we got to wrap this up, or we'll be here till midnight.
Sarah Sidjia, S.I.D.D.I.Q.U.I., eight-six-two Oak Ridge Boulevard. I just want to know who the thirty-nine parking spots are for. Because they said there's thirty-nine parking spots. Who's parking there and why?
Okay. We will get to that. So I think, taking a list of questions here, we are going to close the public hearing portion of this petition, then. I've got a list of questions, some I'm going to look to city staff for. The size of the signage, I think we can approach that in some of the later stages of our, of our meeting tonight, where we have a section for other business and public comment. I don't think that's necessarily tied to this petition, so look to staff to comment on that later during item G or H. And if you, I'm going to list these questions to mirror, I don't want to put you on the spot, so if you say you got to look into it or don't want to comment, or it's the petitioner team, I will definitely be glad to kick it over to them. Are you aware of any issues with plowing and salting?
I don't know.
All right. If that's possible, like that to be looked at before it goes to city council. There was a fair amount of anecdotal evidence tonight, and I'd like, if we could, to have that corroborated before anything moves forward. Policing and drinking, the question was asked, like, who's responsible for law enforcement in this area? And it sounds like there's an existing problem already that has nothing to do with this property. So is this Bartlett or Elgin, and was there input given from law enforcement on this?
Not to that extent. I would suspect like any other roadway that's under IDOT jurisdiction, it's a shared responsibility by both Sheriff's Department and the City of Elgin's Police Department, as well as Village of Bartlett's Police Department.
What about the subdivision to the north?
Well, the one that's in the City of Elgin, that would be the, you know, Police Department of the City of Elgin. The along Will Scarlet Lane, that would be unincorporated Cook County, so that would be the Cook County Sheriff's Office.
Okay. Just wanted to bring it to light. So then you kind of addressed who polices this intersection at Lambert and twenty by your comment. There was a question about the size and height of the pricing sign?
Yeah, I can answer that question, it's fairly simple. So they are allowed a, up to a ten-foot-high monument sign, they can be up to eighty square feet total. They are proposing a nine-foot-four inches high sign, that would be eighty square feet high. This would be eighty square feet of signed surface area. Of that, up to forty square feet can be devoted to the electronic message board that appetizes the cost of gas and stuff.
So this is the typical ground now to sign with the masonry base?
Correct. Code compliant, and there are sign drawings in the packet.
Right. The height and extent of the fence, there was a comment about the length of the east and west, as well as the height. I know there's city ordinances guiding some of this, and you've asked for it to be extended to the west. Do you have any additional comments on that height and extent as far as staff's view of screening and other things related to it?
So this slide shows the layout of the fence. So generally, going further to the west would not be recommended. We typically have the fences kind of end with the parking spaces here in line with generally the parking lot. On the east here, there's a stormwater detention, so the fence cannot go inside into the detention facility. Now, could there be a fence up here along the north property line, or maybe down here or here? That's, that may be an opportunity where the neighborhood and the developer can agree to maybe some, whatever the extension of the fence was discussed, so.
Okay. Thirty-nine stalls was a question I think city staff can handle?
So they are code compliant in terms of parking. There was a note in the staff report, how many are required. It's based on the square footage, one per two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. I don't have it exactly in front of me, but thirty-nine is more than what they are. They're required twenty-two, they're providing thirty-nine, so they meet the code requirement. If they choose to have more than less, that's certainly up to them, if they feel there's more than, you know, in addition to the staff, there's more than, you know, twenty-one customers coming at the same time, if they want to provide it, that's up to them.
Okay. Question about how traffic turnlights help? It's kind of related to IDOT and city staff, or do I look to the team who's got input from KLOA?
I would prefer that the applicant's traffic consultant answer those questions.
Okay. As far as describing the access gates?
Oh, yeah, so.
That was in the packet, but yeah.
Yeah, so there, again, this is going to be between the applicant and the Bartlett Fire Protection District, but currently there's an access easement, so the Village of Bartlett Fire Protection District has access rights and it's indicated.
Get your exercise, going back and forth, get us our answers, appreciate it.
No problem at all. So right here, there's a dashed line, a twenty-foot-wide access roadway that goes from Will Scarlet Lane, I shouldn't, sorry, it's not a roadway, it's an easement from Will Scarlet Lane down to Route twenty. It's not improved, so it doesn't serve as an access point. It's just an easement that was reserved for future access. They, in their conversations with the Village of Bartlett, they've agreed to vacate that easement, so eliminate it, and instead grant another easement that is in line with this development. So the access easement would follow the proposed driveway and then would go directly north here. Now, this portion between the fence and the cul-de-sac would not be improved, it would just be sort of a gravel surface that one could drive on in the case of emergency. Ideally, we don't want a connection here, a normal driveway connection. I think if that was proposed, I think it would be a detriment to this neighborhood. It would allow people to drive up and down, not just fire department equipment. So with the gate and the fence, there's currently a gate there that suggests there is an access point to, you know, at the bulk of the cul-de-sac. But something similar would stay there, would be a then gravel surface and then a gate in the fence. It is not uncommon for the fire department to have access to a gated area. They have that in the form of a lockbox and they can access that. That's a fairly common arrangement. So we felt that a arrangement like that is a much more preferred alternative than a normal driveway access into the cul-de-sac that would allow anybody to drive up and down Will Scarlet.
A question came up about accountability. I think city ordinance's inspection process, maybe shed light on that?
There was a question about landscaping accountability, is that what you're referring to?
I think that was, that was it in construction, I believe the construction aspects and construction access to the petitioner team, but yeah, landscaping and long-term maintenance.
Right. So they are proposing two stormwater detention facilities that they will be required to maintain. Along with that, any landscaping that they install, they'll have to maintain. If a tree dies, they'll have to install a new one. So they are, it's their responsibility to maintain their property in a good, you know, standing in good marriage.
All right. That's all I had on my list. I think that was for you, so I will look to the petitioner team now. If you want to come back up, and I, again, I know you took a lot of notes, but just for the sake of time and scratching my list off, if there's something that, you know, I miss, you can certainly go through yours. One of the questions was how does the traffic turn light help? I believe that was from twenty on to Lambert Lane, if you want to address that. And again, if you are, I'll give you the same courtesy I gave to staff, if you say prefer not to answer at this time or need information, provided forthcoming, I definitely want to give you that same opportunity. So do you want to address that?
Yeah. Drew's is off speed with the applicant, just maybe just very quickly before we address traffic, because we do have a representative from KLOA.
Okay.
The traffic engineer on the project, you know, I just, I do want to say that, you know, we did see a lot of frustration and anger from you folks. It sounds like. folks, it sounds like there's a lot of existing issues at this intersection, and we're going to talk about traffic here tonight, but I just want to tell you that this is an existing...
Sir, actually, I'm going to interrupt you, just for the sake of not rehashing things and not introducing new testimony, which gets us into a new cycle of questions, I think it's probably simpler just to address the questions that we've been presented, and I don't mean to be discourteous to you, but it just, it, it, just to keep things, uh, moving forward.
Sure, yeah, I think with that, we'll, we'll hand it over to the traffic expert, and he'll answer that question.
Thank you for understanding.
Uh, good evening, excuse me, my name's Michael Worthman, I'm a principal with KLOA, Teneck Linger, and O'Hara Bona Inc., uh, I've practiced for thirty-plus years, registered engineer in the state of Illinois. Let's talk about the intersection of US twenty and Lambert Lane, we heard a lot of, um, talk about that, and we understand the concerns of the residents. As part of this development, we are proposing a number of improvements, both safety and capacity, to improve the intersection, and more importantly, to mitigate the impact of the proposed development. The first is the safety. Uh, we submitted a report to IDOT, and they came back with this, uh, safety tier, uh, at the intersection. And their main concern was the left turns from, uh, twenty on to Lambert Lane, both eastbound and northbound, and westbound to southbound. And their concern is the number of accidents they've had, and that is primarily due to the left turns that are done on the green ball, which we call a permissive left, and the limited sight distance that everyone talked about. So you're trying to make that left turn, and traffic's coming around that corner, it's hard to see, and that's the issue they have, and they want to eliminate the permissive left turn. So left turns will only be on that green arrow, when traffic is stopped, and you have the green arrow. With that, um, we are proposing, and IDOT has requested, to extend that eastbound left turn lane. So right now, there's about two-hundred feet of stacking, we're going to extend that to put three-hundred feet of stacking, uh, to accommodate some additional traffic, as well as the traffic that we're generating. From a capacity standpoint, what we're trying to do on Lambert Lane, on the north leg of Lambert Lane, right now, there's a left turn lane and two through lanes, and there's very little through traffic. Uh, what we're proposing is to make the outside through lane the separate right turn lane, so you'd have a left turn lane, a through lane, and a separate right turn lane. And when you put a right turn lane in, you can put an overlap phase in. So when that eastbound left turn's coming in, that right turn lane can go out, so it greatly increases the capacity of that approach by putting in that separate right turn lane and putting in the overlap on the signal. So we're trying to improve the capacity of Lambert Lane by putting this right turn lane in the overlap. Uh, we're addressing that safety concern that IDOT has, and many of the residents have, uh, by eliminating that permissive left turn. And anytime you touch a traffic signal like we're doing here, uh, it's going to be re-optimized after all of these improvements come in. So with the re-optimization, IDOT will look at the green time and see if additional green time is needed for the additional movements that are at that intersection. So the whole intersection will be looked at, it's going to be an overall overhaul of that intersection. And, um, like someone said, if we don't go in, nothing's going to happen at this intersection for a while. I think Chairman New asked a question, you know, what's, or I'm sorry, maybe you did, ma'am, when's IDOT going to come in? And, you know, they only have limited funds, and they look at different things, and they do have crash funds, where they look at intersections that have, uh, higher levels of accidents, but there's a number of those statewide, and there's only so much funds for that. So if we don't go in, these same issues are out there, uh, but if we come in, we're trying to address those issues, we're adding capacity to this intersection, we're trying to make it a more efficient intersection, so they can accommodate the existing traffic as well as our traffic. As to the concerns of pulling out of the, uh, Lambert Lane, it is a signalized intersection, so that provides you for the safest possible means to enter and exit, uh, from a side street. I do understand that you may have to wait to make sure the traffic stops, but that's good driving. I don't enter an intersection right when it turns green, I make sure that the traffic is stopped before I go on there. This wasn't a concern of IDOT yet, we haven't heard it from them. Uh, looking at the accident data, the majority of the accidents at this intersection are rear-end accidents, and they're probably occurring on twenty, if they come around the corner and the traffic is stopped, they're bumping into the vehicles that are stopped. It's not necessarily, not necessarily the traffic coming out of Lambert Lane. That being said, uh, we will work with IDOT to see if there's any advanced signage that we can put on Lake Street that says signal ahead, you know? The city of Elgin, I don't know if you have red light cameras, I'm not familiar with it, but you could put a red light camera at this intersection, if that's, uh, something that Elgin wants to do. But red light cameras go in through the city in which the intersection's in, so that would have to be petitioned by the, uh, city of Elgin. So, we understand the concerns, when I first came in on this project, you know, we worked on the car wash, we understood all of the concerns, and I said, we really have to look at this intersection, we have to put some capacity improvements in, uh, we got to look at the safety concerns, and I think we've gone a long way. We will work with the city of Elgin, we're continuing to work with IDOT to make sure we address all of this. I'm just going to go through a couple other concerns I've heard while I'm up here.
You, you can, uh, just again, want to maintain the minimal editorializing, you're pushing that boundary a little bit, and again, I don't want to be...
No, I, I just want to bring up one other, there was the, I think the last gentleman brought up the access drive on US twenty. Um, we are asking for a right-in, right-out-only access drive. We are putting in, for those slower traffic that's turning into that, we're putting in a separate right turn lane, hundred-and-eighty-five feet of right turn lane with a two-hundred-and-twenty foot taper. So as, as you come in to go into that right turn lane, you have a, a large right turn lane to slow down in order to make that turn, and that's a requirement of IDOT.
The, the, one of the questions there, was that for cars only, or trucks and cars, or one or the other?
It is for cars only. On the site plan, a truck will never be able to make this U-turn as it come out and come back down.
All right.
Just on the truck traffic, um, we do expect some semi-trailers, uh, at this facility, but probably half to maybe two-thirds are going to be single-unit trucks and much smaller semi-trailers. Um, that's just what we find when we look at other facilities. It's diesel, and most of these smaller trucks, like Drew said, landscaping trucks, Amazon trucks, you know, single-unit trucks that you see out there will be at this facility too. But I'm here for any questions that you have, and I appreciate the time.
Great. Okay, uh, Drew, are you, yes, ma'am? So we'll take a pause here for the sake of electronics. You're very welcome. All right, I believe, I, I just go through the, the last couple of questions I've got here. The gentleman from KLOA, um, did, uh, address a few things about, uh, the truck access, the turn lights, the sight lines, the signal notification, so tho- those were, uh, helpful. There was a, let's see, timing of light. The undeveloped parcel was a why? Why is it there, is there a future plan for that? Or does that intend to be remained as green, uh, remaining as green space?
Yeah, no, no future plan at the, at the moment for, for that piece to the northwest. I don't want to add any additional editorial comment to that answer, so I'll leave it there.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Catching, catching my drift, thank you. Galt access during construction, I think that was one that not, is not necessarily attributed to you or this project, it hasn't even been approved yet, but previous experience from the residents seems to, uh, point towards, um, that. So can you comment to, um, maintaining that throughway during construction?
Yeah.
Philip Bolduc with Thornton's, twenty-six-hundred James Thornton Way. During construction, our site will be fenced off with construction fencing, there will be a construction access drive onto Galt Lane or Lambert, as many of us are calling it. And construction debris is required through your code to be maintained in a dumpster enclosure during construction, and we will abide by all your current codes. So that addresses that. There was another issue about photometrics. I believe we have a photometric plan that was submitted that will meet all of your current standards, so.
Photometrics was not on my list of questions, but I appreciate that. We had, uh, comment about gaming, if that's gambling, or if that's, uh, Mortal Kombat, or you tell me, uh, what, what the thought is on that. Got some chuckles down here, that was the intent of that.
So they are gaming machines, um, the state of Illinois regulates that, along with the Village of Elgin, and that is something that we, um, will apply for, once we are open, and meeting the current, uh, ordinances that are required by the state of Illinois for, uh, diesel fuel consumption, um, there's a few other parameters, but that is something that comes before the gaming commission at a later date.
Okay, so there's some thought that goes into that, as far as marketability. Uh, e-charging, uh, was asked if it was part of this, or if it's changing the proposal?
EV charging, so we do have, uh, when the market demands that we have EV charging, that is one of the reasons why we have excess parking spaces. Those are located, uh, presumably on Lambert Lane, in that area there. That would be our focused area for EV charging.
You answered two questions with one, uh, one item. I believe you had addressed the fuel tanks, but again, it came up about lifespan and, and maintenance, so if that's electronic or some other method, maybe that would help answer that question.
Drew's is off to you. So there are generally two suppliers that Thornton's uses for these types of underground storage tanks, and both suppliers rate these tanks at, at a fifty-year lifespan, uh, or higher. These are, as I mentioned in my presentation, double-walled fiberglass tanks, I can't remember exactly who asked the question, but these tanks are, are monitored, uh, what's called interstitially, which means there's a, there's a fluid between the inner wall of the first tank and the second tank, and the pressure is monitored constantly in that, in that liquid. If there's a pressure drop or leakage of any kind, store's alerted, the transportation team is alerted, the environmental folks who work for Thornton's are alerted. So this is completely different technology than you may have read about, um, and that's the type of technology we're going to be implementing here.
Okay. There was this question about, two questions actually relating to water, one is a water table, and one was, um, talking about stormwater, um, after improvement. Typically, I think these are done with the engineering that, you know, you want to address that?
Sure. On one of the slides, it's probably difficult to see, the elevation difference between Oak Ridge and Sherwood Oaks, and our location is, is significant. If you've been by the site, you know, um, Sherwood and Oak Ridge are in the eight-oh-seven, eight-oh-eight, eight-oh-nine elevation, uh, we're down at eight-hundred, eight-oh-two, eight-oh-three. Groundwater is actually coming towards us, not going towards the neighborhood, uh, as far as, you know, a leak in an underground storage tank is concerned. As far as stormwater, you know, we, we need to work with the mayor, we need to work with the city engineer, to make sure that our preliminary analysis holds true in our final design, but, you know, we're, we're adequately sized, uh, on the property for stormwater.
All right, and I think the last question, uh, that I saw or heard was, um, I think maybe titled incorrectly, there was a question about fuel stations versus truck stops, this is not a truck stop, I think this is a, a vehicle, uh, you know, there's like a car and truck fueling here, but there was a question related to that and, and dur- um, stop duration times and crime and other things, if you wanted to comment on that.
I'm happy to start, Phil, if you want to.
For whomever, from the team.
So, we are, this is not an area that we have overnight pike, parking for trucks, there's no spots designated for trucks to do that. There are no showers, as we mentioned, there's no laundry facilities. We internally police this because we want to keep the site open for, uh, customers to come and go freely, um, and that's the, one of the reasons why. We don't feel this is an adequate site for a truck stop designation. It's way too far from an interstate, so that's really all I can add to that.
All right. That was the extent of my list, was there anything else on your list that we may not have covered? Again, just for the, the sake of not rehashing everything, but just to do our best to address resident concerns.
Sure. Um, I just wanted to point out one thing related to the proposed right turn lane, so everyone's on the same page. There, the right turn lane that we're proposing will serve the right-in, right-out driveway, so the dimensions that Michael gave to everyone, the, the storage and the taper lane, that's east of our property, so cars and trucks are going to be able to get into that lane, slow down appropriately, and, and get into the site, clearing the through lanes for folks that are going through the intersection. I just wanted to add to that, that, um, I believe the property directly next to us is owned by the city of Bartlett, I think there's a pump station there. There are some trees on that site, um, that may make sense to come down from a visibility perspective, some folks have asked about that. I think we should partner with them, I think it's a, it's a no-brainer to ask them to remove and potentially replace those elsewhere, but to open up the view corridor there for folks coming around that turn. I think it's something that we can work with staff and the engineering department on, but if there's any collaboration with Bartlett, um, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I think, I think that was generally my list as well, so.
All right, appreciate you taking notes, um, again, for the sake of transparency and doing our best to address comments that we hear tonight. So thank you for coming back up and answering these questions.
Thank you.
All right. We'll look back to city staff then. Any, uh, final comments that you may have?
I don't think it is, there's anything else to add, I think I tried to answer the questions that you had earlier that I noted in here that are for staff. There was a question about signage and lighting that would be shining onto properties south of Route twenty. Uh, I've, I've spoken about the monument sign that's going to be eighty square feet and, and nine feet four inches. The lighting plan that was submitted, part of the packet, is in compliance with the city requirements. The city code does not allow lighting onto a right-of-way, so that will be the north property line of US twenty, so that lighting can be no more than zero-point-five-foot candles. So in other words, yes, you will see the light from afar distance, but that light is not shining onto that property. So similarly, on the north property line of this development, uh, adjacent to the residences, um, you, you, there will be essentially zero, uh, foot candles at the, at that lot line along the bulb of the, of Will Scarlet Lane. Um, and I thought there was, you know, we talked about law enforcement, um, I believe that's all I had in my notes. So, we've heard certainly a lot of testimony tonight, um, nothing that we are, that we found, uh, unexpected. The, the site is situated such that it is along Route twenty. It is, again, forty-two thousand vehicles per day, this is a heavily-traveled arterial, very similar to Randall Road, that carries about forty-five, forty-six thousand vehicles per day, um, at its busiest, you know, sort of, uh, section. Uh, there are, the applicant spoke about the other uses along Route twenty. Uh, this is not unlike other arterials that have commercial uses along that arterial road, that's sort of back up to the residential development in the back of it, that's, that's the trend of development across the entire city of Elgin. This is a, specifically the Oak Ridge subdivision does have limited access to and from that subdivision, that is certainly well documented. But if there's no development coming along, then there's no improvements. There was some commentary about sidewalk ending in a ditch, well, that's going to be like that forever until there's n- n- new development on that, at the end of that ditch. Uh, so, so, you know, y- y- with, the applicant has spoken about the improvements in the intersection, uh, so, so those are because the applicant is proposing right-in, right-out to US twenty, that, you know, if that is eliminated, then those improvements may, you know, to the intersection maybe, may go away. So, um, in light of all those things, and what the comp plan calls for, and the trend of development along Route twenty, uh, we, we do believe that the standards are satisfied, and, and therefore staff recommends approval subject to the conditions in the packet.
Okay, so, um, at this point in time, the chair will entertain a motion, uh, for these petitions. Thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three dash twenty-two. 31, 32, and 33-22.
I move to recommend the city council approve petition 31, 22, 32, 22, 33, 22, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet and to adopt to the, as the findings of the commission, those findings also provided within our packet. Can I add a comment to my motion or after we?
We can have a discussion unless you're adding a condition or recommendation to the motion.
I'm not sure if it's a recommendation to the motion or not. But I, I, I'll make, I'll leave the motion at that.
Okay, is there a second? If there's no second, the motion dies.
I second.
Okay, discussion, starting with Commissioner Woldermuth since she made the motion.
Thank you. So I, I greatly appreciate the, the applicant's presentation and the work to improve, especially around, around the intersection. I do have grave concerns with the safety there, which I don't think fall directly under to, to the applicant, I think that's been going on for some history. So I do think that we need to look at how can we make improvements to the sightline, police present, police presence in the area to make that safer along there, going into that area and for the residents in the subdivisions there, but appreciate the improvements and the, the need for Thornton's there, but want to make sure that those improvements are discussed at, at council level as we look to improve this to make sure that it's safe.
Commissioner Valdez, any discussion?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I agree with your, your comments. I'm concerned about the safety on Route 20, and I support the addition of the gas station. I think that's a perfect location for it, but I'm concerned about the safety on Route 20 and the traffic there, where that's going, where it's located. Thank you.
Commissioner Abouali, any, any discussion?
I do definitely think that those things need to be looked at in more detail, as far as, you know, you mentioned the flasher that said there's a signal coming up, you know, different things definitely need to be looked at. I do believe that those problems, and I'm not far from there, I know the problems, that they exist, but maybe this coming in would potentially lessen them, but it needs to definitely be looked at in more detail.
Okay, so as, as it stands, we have a motion and a second. Knowing that city council reads these transcripts, city staff hears what we're saying, petitioner team hears what we're saying, I, I agree with what's been said here, I remain wary of the, the safety, trusting the neighbors who live here, but at the same time, looking to actual hard data, which hopefully can be presented via the, the petitioner team or, or city staff before things move forward to the council level. So with that said, like, so we have a motion and a second. I would look to staff to call the roll. If you are, as we've instructed in the past, going to be potentially a vote that may be counted in the motion, I'd like you to explain why. If you are going to vote in favor of the motion, I believe you can just state, just state your vote. So staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Woldermuth?
Yes.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
And will you please enumerate why, if you're comfortable or prefer not?
I'm concerned about the safety, and I'm not sure where that falls on Thornton's or IDOT or the city, and I think it's probably a combination of everybody that's going to need to work together to try to resolve it, and I think it can be resolved prior to going to city council that would meet the needs of the neighborhood, the business, the city, and Route 20. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Valdez?
And it's similar to what she was saying, I feel that there should be more meetings between Thornton and the neighborhoods, and to see if they can agree on what improvements and adjustments can be made and should be made in order to make and feel, or in order to make everybody feel safety. As I also agree with the concern that they have for the children and the safety of their neighborhood.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion is approved three to two.
All right, that'll be the recommendation to city council. Thank you for coming tonight. All right, moving on to item G, other business. I'm going to jump in here quick, we did have one question earlier about the size of the sign relative to weeds and other communities. Demir, would you like to comment on that, or is that a policy thing that you prefer not to discuss tonight?
Well, signage, I thought I answered, there are...
The petition sign, I'm sorry. The, the notice of...
Oh.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No problem at all. So...
And, and everyone we start, we still are in session, excuse me, those of you in the chambers, we, we still are in session, so if you can please, thank, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, Demir.
I'm not certain how long the city has utilized the existing signs that we have, the, the blue signs that are fairly low to the ground. I am familiar with a number of other communities and their public hearing signs, and the vast majority that I'm aware of are generally the same or smaller size than the city of Elgin's. I believe the city of Elgin's sign that is blue is the, is fairly unique. Most of the other signs are generally white, and they kind of blend in with the, the surroundings, so blue ones kind of stick out, and I think that was probably the reason for them. The location of signs is, is, needs to be on the private property, so what you tip, we, we, we try to install them in the most visible location possible. A lot of these sites that are vacant are kind of overgrown with natural, some may call them weeds, but others may call them native prairie plantings and whatever. And so over time, you know, these signs are sometimes installed a month, maybe, you know, a little bit less than before the hearing, so they, they could be overgrown in the summer months, there's truth to that. But they also have to be on the private property, so usually the parkway is mowed, and that appears clean and nice, but then the private property is not, it's, it's got native plantings. So that's why they can appear to be sort of in a less visible location. Not sure what the solution to that is, if, if we want to see, you know, native plantings around. Certainly if it's, if it's grass, that can be no more than 10 inches, I believe, then it's a violation of the city code. In this case, this property's not in the city, it's, it's unincorporated, so we don't even have enforcement over weeds or anything like that. So that's all I can offer.
And, and these are typically placed by zoning staff, maybe even yourself, who doesn't have a gas-powered string trimmer in the trunk of your city vehicle, correct?
As of late, they have been posted by myself, and specifically on this property, I posted them myself specifically, I know exactly where they were posted, and I, I took photographs of them and have shared them with some of the, the commission members. Again, because the property's unincorporated, we have little enforcement, and it has to be on the private property, not in the parkway. So in certain instances, the visibility of those may be limited, yes. But that's why the city provides other forms of notices, notices published in the newspaper, we've encouraged the, the applicant to reach out to the neighbors, and then we also send the neighborhood notices to surrounding property owners that are within 300 feet of the property.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the commission have any other business? Hearing none, we move on to public comment. If there's anyone who remains in the council chambers who wants to discuss items which are not related to petitions tonight, now is your opportunity.
Any just, just a mere notification? It's a small...
I, I still need you to stand over there, sorry. Come on, we want you to be heard, sir. All right.
It has to do with the, the notifications.
Notifications, okay.
I read in the courtesy copy that it comes out in this manner, it's referred to as a courtesy copy because of the state statute and a village, excuse me, a city ordinance, is that correct?
That is correct.
Isn't that also correct, the city of Elgin is a home rule community?
It is correct.
Isn't that, is a home rule community cannot change that legislation on its own?
We certainly could, provide additional regulations about the notices if the city council finds it that's appropriate.
Okay. That's my comment to the, to the board is, you could expand beyond what they do at this point. You 30-day notification, everyone within 500 feet, whatever seems reasonable, but it's not stuck with a sign sitting in front of a piece of property where you're going 45 miles an hour, turn making a curve, and you're supposed to see the zoning hearing board. So that's my suggestion to the, you may want to recommend to the village board that they change the way they do their notifications based upon their home rule powers. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anyone else want to comment again on something not related to any petitions tonight? All right, don't believe there's anything else, so moving on to item I, summary of pending development applications. It's been a long evening, so I think we've probably all read the list, and if you want to just give us the highlights?
Just the fact that the next meeting will be on October 3rd, Monday, that's going to be in three weeks, so the next meeting is approaching fairly quickly. We will have at least a couple items on the agenda, one of which will be the, the 280-unit development at the southwest corner of Hobbs and Randall that was mentioned in the petition for the townhomes, so. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the projects.
Hearing none, last item on the agenda is adjournments. Is there a motion and a second?
I move to adjourn, second.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Abouali. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Woldermuth?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.